Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2015-2016 Board of Alderman Budget Deliberations. Today is April 22nd, 2015, and today we are here for the departmental presentation portion of the automatic budget process. But before we begin, will everyone please rise and we salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson.
Yeah, Madam Secretary, you'd like to be excused?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Beer.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Fontana.
Here.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Genotasio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Alderman Hardiman.
Alderman Kubek.
Alderman Shaw.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Stanford.
Alderman Beccarelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale. He's here.
Eleven present, we do have a quorum. At this point, the first organizational department on our agenda is number 4812, Transit Authority, page eighty-nine in your books.
My name is Henry Jadak, I'm the Executive Director of the Milford Transit District. For those, just very briefly, for those of you who may not know all the things that we do, I'd just like to run some things by you. The district operates a local fixed route bus service, a jobs access bus service from Milford to Norwalk, an ADA van service, a service for the elderly, and a railroad shuttle from, a wheeler shuttle from north Milford to the train station, and we operate the train station parking for Metro North commuters. The fixed route bus services provide a little over four hundred thousand rides a year. The van services provide close to sixty thousand rides a year. Our request represents approximately nine percent of our overall operating and capital budget of about three point seven million dollars. Although it's nine percent doesn't sound like a lot, it is an awful lot, because we're able to use that money to match other money and show the great support that the city does give the district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. We're doing that good, huh?
Does anyone have any questions regarding the Transit Authority? Alderman, Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Vitro. What was those numbers again?
Which ones?
The writers.
The fixed route bus services, that's the jobs access service that goes from Milford to Norwalk that we provide with Greater Bridgeport Transit and Greater Norwalk Transit. The three of us run that service together. Our portion of the service, plus our local fixed route services, carry approximately four hundred thousand rides a year, and the ADA van service and the elderly van service just a little bit, a shade under sixty thousand rides a year.
Anyone else, seven, any questions for Henry? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the great job you do for the City of Milford. Next up, we have Department number 4825, Bethel Shelter, page ninety-two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Alderman, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Aradisi, Mr. Fornier. I'm glad you moved from the podium, because they were teasing me that I couldn't see over the podium, so I'm glad you had the chairs set up. Good evening, my name is Tony Dolan, Executive Director of the Bethel Center, and with me tonight are some of our board members, our Board President, Ed Davies, Attorney Michael Williams is our Board Secretary, and Suzanne Lingus is our Board Treasurer. First of all, as always, we want to express our deep appreciation to the City of Milford for their support over the many years, and our ongoing partnership to serve those in need in our community. We are here tonight to give you the latest details of our center operations, so that you can have a clear understanding of the budget request, and to answer any questions that you may have. In the informational packets that I hope you have, that you have been provided, is the updated annual operating budget for FY 2015. This is revised from when you originally saw the application. Our newly printed annual report, as of yesterday, for 2014, and some other supportive information. The biggest challenge for us for 2015 has been and will continue to be the system-wide changes to the way in which we conduct our shelter services. For the first time ever, we were required to submit a proposal in a competitive bid process for our Department of Housing contract last December. It's the first time in eight and a half years that I've been there that we've ever been in a competitive bid process. While I'm happy to report that our shelter did receive funding, the new contractual requirements will have an impact on the demand for our services. The state has aligned itself with the goals, with the HUD goals of ending homelessness, and is the driving force behind the changes to the shelter programs system-wide, and that's throughout the state. They are, everything, of course, is now working through the 211 info line, so anyone that needs housing and shelter services has to call 211. There's no more going to the door, there's no more, no more calling on the phone to shelters. That this, the idea of this is to allow less confusion for clients trying to seek shelter. What that means for us is that on Tuesdays, 211 schedules appointments, and we do assessments on Tuesdays. Columbus House does two days, Spooner House does one day, so we all participate in this, and then from there, we refer out to whatever available bed there is. So, in addition to their regular case management, we're also now required to do this assessment as well as increased services for people that are a little more challenging than maybe we would have had before. Our food program costs have risen, the number of people served continues to increase, we served twenty-six thousand six hundred and eighty-five meals in 2014 to those in need in our community. The addition of meals prepared has increased because we now have Milford and Devon Rotary Clubs providing meals during the month. We also have PlatTech Culinary Program and the Connection Culinary Programs, all providing additional meals in the evening. When we do the additional meals in the evening, we do not provide the bag meals. So, this is, this is good for our clients, and we are providing additional meals for those in need. I think it's important to note that we have operated the only no-freeze warming center in the city for those who are without adequate shelter during the harsh winter months. As you can imagine, we were under a great deal of pressure this past winter. We operated between the hours of nine PM to seven AM, depending upon the temperatures, and given the winter we had, we were open almost every night. Opened earlier, closed later. We continue to watch expenses closely and to seek new sources of efficiency. Our staff levels remain the same despite the programmatic changes. Six full-time staff. Remaining staff are per diem or part-time, ensuring a 24/7 coverage for the residents of the shelter. The food program operates with one full-time staff person and one part-time staff person, and we could not operate if we did not have the number of dedicated volunteers that we do have. Our revenue sources are diversified, thereby not relying solely on the state and federal funds, in addition to the Department of Housing and Veterans Administration contracts. We receive funding from the United Way of Milford, foundation and corporate support, local civic clubs and organizations, our loyal churches, and the generous individuals of this community who provide financial in-kind and volunteer services. Development and fundraising is the only other way to close the gap, and our board is committed, committing every effort to work towards that goal. We're requesting the same level of funding as last year, eighty thousand. However, we cannot continue to sustain the same level of services if we were to suffer any cuts to this request, so therefore, we're asking that you consider the same level of funding. I thank you for your time, commitment, and consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Casey.
Three, you, as I understand, that the policy of the state is that a prospective client wants to come, use your services, he or she must go through the 211 services? Is that correct?
Yes.
So, that must be somewhat challenging if the prospective client doesn't have access to, you know, phone services and things like that. Is there a way to address that, or is there a plan?
Yes, I mean, for example, if someone really didn't have, they could come to our door, and we could, then, we would then bring them in, take them in, and call 211 with them, and go through the process with them. So, you know, that is a possibility. The state does provide phones, by the way, for many people who are eligible, free, to those who are eligible, so a lot of people do have phones, but for those who don't, there is a way around it, but you still have to use 211.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned that this is less confusing for people in this new system, can you explain why, or is that?
Well, if you were, if you were faced with being at risk of homelessness, or you're imminently going to be homeless, or you were homeless, in the past, you might have to call five, six, seven different shelters before you found an available bed. So, the idea is one point of entry, and then refer it out from there, makes it less, less confusing, less, you know, time spent trying to find proper shelter.
And if I can just follow up, so that helps you a bit in efficiencies, this, using 211?
It does, yes, it does, in terms of, you know, when we do, when anyone does an assessment, and this is in the New Haven region, so we're all in a coordinated access network in region-wise.
Right.
Throughout the state, everyone operates a little slightly differently, but for the New Haven region, of which we obviously are, the system is, it's working, I mean, it has its kinks, but it's working. And the other fine, good thing about this for all of us is that we're all also entering the same data, into the same database. So, throughout the state, we're all seeing the same information.
Right, so you can see the services.
Yes, so if someone shows up, we can track that person, and see where else they've been, you know, and other things about them, which is very helpful to our case managers.
And just one more follow-up, how does this dovetail with Milford's outreach to the homeless community, does this, as, as your program goes forward?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
How does this dovetail with Milford's effort on homelessness and addressing that?
We're also doing as part, in addition to, this is another thing, we're, we're reaching out, we're starting to do outreach to those who are outside in Milford, because we do know they exist. We've been involved, obviously, in the panhandling effort, trying to help talk to some of those people and let them know what resources are available to them. But we're also going to start having an afternoon, or maybe, depends upon how it goes, but an afternoon where we're going to set aside a few hours, and we're going to, we're going to have case managers there, and invite people in, so that they can come in and find out exactly what is available to them, because many people don't even know what services or benefits are available to them. So, this is something new, we're kind of, as you said, dovetailing with what we already do, to do more outreach to those that are out there, because they're the real challenge.
Thanks to you and to all your volunteers and all for what you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Tony, I'd just like to congratulate you and the board for all you do for the, for the homeless and what you do in the city. There are just a couple of questions that I have. Is there anyone ever turned away, and if they are, are they redirected, and what does that process look like?
Well, that's an interesting question, because in the past, if we were full, they were turned away, and there wasn't a whole lot of option. Now, if they're assessed, say we have someone come to us on Tuesday at ten o'clock, and we do the, what we call the vulnerability index, which indicates exactly how critical their need is. They, our case managers are on a phone call every morning, on a conference call throughout the region, and everyone's giving the same information. So, when they do an assessment, they're able to look at the data, and they're saying, okay, there's a single bed available at Spooner House, so you go to Spooner House. Now, that, there's a possibility that in the region, there wouldn't be a bed available at that moment, and in that case, 211 does have funding available for temporary hotel stays if they need to. So, it's, it's kind of, you know, it's, it is a coordinated system, it's, it's not perfect yet, but it's getting there.
Right, but let's assume somebody comes to your door, and there, you don't have a bed, and you need to redirect them somewhere else, how do they get there?
There's also transportation funds available.
That you provide?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Two other things, I haven't looked at the information you've given us at this point, we just got it tonight.
Yes.
And, but what is your total operating budget?
Seven hundred and eighteen thousand plus.
Seven hundred and eighteen thou, and what is, what do you, how do you, as far as fundraising is concerned, how much money do you raise during the year in fundraising? I know you have a gala coming up, that is a fantastic night out, so I encourage everybody to come out, but, but other than that, how do you fundraise? What are the money?
Tickets are available. We raise, well, we, we raise money in a lot of different ways, but with our events, we were, we're, our goal this year is to raise about eighty thousand in events, which is a big goal, because we only have two major events a year. And then, the rest of it is in, in events that, or fundraisers that are done for us, for example, like Babettes and people like that, doing other individual, you know, in little, little, littler goals, but add up.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for all you guys do, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Dolan, and your staff. Every budget cycle we go through, we, you and other departments come before us, this is the only chance we have to talk with all of the various desperate departments within the city and quasi-governmental organizations, and we've talked about this every year I've been on the board, but it's kind of paradoxical that the greater the need is inverse to what the economic realities are. As the economy has gotten worse through the recession going back six, seven years, the available revenues have obviously followed suit, it's, you needed more and have less available. We talk about that every year. We did make an adjustment last year by about five thousand dollars, is my, as the, the budget book reminds me, but you get, the most of the money is, is from foundations and the Connecticut State Contracts you have. Have those sources of revenue been curtailed at all this budget year?
The veterans contract we have has, every year has a small delta increase, every year. Department of Housing, the contract we got this year did increase by a few thousand dollars. I mean, it never pays for the shelter services, but it did increase by a few thousand, which I was surprised and happy about. And then, our GMS contract just pays for the case manager who does the supportive housing across the street, and that's just been level, ever since we've had it, it's the same as we've always had. You know, we pay for her, and that's it. So, it, it, you know, it's an in-out kind of thing for us, it doesn't really give us a whole lot, because they don't allow a whole lot of admin costs.
Everything else is pretty much still a status quo. I know you're making do with, with the same and providing more services, as you explained earlier, and again, I commend you and the staff at Bethel for all the wonderful work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Tony? Bethel Shelter. Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, for your great presentation, and for all the work you do for the great city of Milford. Next account on the agenda is the Veterans Ceremony and Parade Commission, page thirty-three. What? They got moved? Oh, look at that.
Mr. Chair, I do not see Tom Flowers in the audience. If we could pass him, he may have to come to another meeting? Oh, he's, he's scheduled for tomorrow?
All right, next on the agenda will be account number 4116, Milford Government Access Television. Oh, wait a minute, that's been moved to April 27th, sorry. The next one on the list would be account number 4801, Consulon Aging, page eighty-seven.
I'm Janice Jackson, Executive Director of the Milford Senior Center. With me tonight is Mary Ellen Herrama, a bookkeeper. Between July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014, our 3,000 members participated in a wide variety of activities such as three foreign language classes, computer classes, many different exercise classes, lectures, band, and choral concerts. The errands program is designed for members with cognitive impairments that need a supervised environment. This program offers the caregiver several hours of respite time. The Milford Food Bank is located in the senior center and assists anyone in need of food in Milford. Members who do not drive are transported by one of our eight drivers in the following vehicles. We have two seven-passenger vans, one sedan, four fourteen-passenger buses, one four, one four-passenger station wagon, we also have two Meals on Wheels trucks and one food bank van. This is a total of eleven vehicles. We have two full-time drivers, one full-time supervisor, and five part-time drivers. Between July 1st, 2013, to June 30th, 2014, the senior center provided approximately twenty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-nine rides to seniors and disabled clients living in Milford. Our insurance specialists provided three hundred, three thousand four hundred and fifty-five units of service. Approximately five thousand thirty seniors participated in our Continental Breakfast Program. Last year, we served twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six meals in our mini-lunch program. Nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-six meals were delivered to homebound elderly and disabled clients living in Milford. Two thousand ninety-eight recipients received assistance from the Milford Food Bank. That is a ten percent increase over last year's figure of one thousand nine hundred and four recipients that received assistance. Participation in senior center classes was approximately forty-nine thousand seven hundred and two. Four hundred and thirty-four people received their flu vaccine at two flu shot clinics at the center. The average age of our membership is seventy-five. From the 2,000 census to the 2,010 census, there has been a twenty-three percent increase in people over the age of fifty-five. The senior center employs forty-three people, six are full-time, twenty-nine are part-time, and we have eight teachers. Sixty-eight percent of our budget is from the City of Milford grant. Cost-saving measures that we have taken, our full-time employees contribute a premium cost share of six percent per week towards their health insurance. Fundraising events last year, our staff raised approximately six hundred and fourteen dollars during fundraising events. Our donation boxes in our classes have resulted in approximately seven hundred dollars a month. We have had a ten percent increase in attendance in our special events. Five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine seniors attended special events in 2014, and five thousand two hundred and thirty-one seniors attended in 2013. We have been receiving the same operating grants that we received in 2007. Regarding the uses of gasoline, as of March 31st, 2015, we have used seventy-seven percent of the gas and propellants account, we have used fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and forty-five cents of our twenty thousand dollar account. The balance is four thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. We use approximately fourteen hundred dollars a month for gas. The reason for our point nine-five percent increase, we need to pay for the installation and configuration of a donated 2009 server that we received from the Milford Board of Education. Also, HR support and insurance increases. We thank you very much for your continued support of our older adults in the Milford community. Does anyone have any questions about our programs or services?
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Just quickly, you went through those numbers quicker than I could, but just generally, the increase in participation through the senior center on a daily basis? You've had an increase?
Yes, ten percent increase in attendance in our special events. Five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine seniors attended special events in 2014, and in 2013, there were five thousand two hundred and thirty-one.
And that's, and that's a ten percent increase in the last few years, is that what I'm understanding?
That was, that was a ten percent increase from 2013 to 2014.
So, just in one year?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, Janice. I don't know if you mentioned in your data there, how much do you collect in membership dues? When I was on the Council on Aging, it used to keep Mike Petricelli up at night, knowing that not everybody was paying, I don't know if you're making any progress there.
Yes, we have a volunteer that calls members monthly to remind them that they haven't paid their dues, but our membership dues have increased from ten dollars a year to fifteen dollars a year, and we did receive nineteen thousand five hundred dollars last year, and that increase from ten to fifteen dollars a year would be approximately ten thousand dollars. And that, that increase was approved by the Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions for Consulon Aging? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. How many total members, again?
Approximately three thousand. Approximately, yeah.
Any follow-up questions, sorry? Any planned increase in annual dues from fifteen to twenty, maybe?
No, that increase, that hasn't been discussed by the Board of Directors as yet.
Is there any more questions for Alderman Vitale?
Through you, Mr. Chair, Janet, Janet, what was the increase you're asking for? What was the percentage?
Point nine-five percent.
And thank you for the excellent job you do for the community. I love the appreciation.
Any more questions? Seeing none, thank you, Janice, and thank you, Mary Ellen. Have a good night.
Thank you.
And thank you again for all the good work that you do for the citizens of Milford, and the great, great work you do for the senior center.
Okay, thank you.
Next up on the hearing schedule is account number 4826, Boys and Girls Club, page ninety-two.
Thank you for having us here today. As you can see, I brought a very large entourage with me today. My board is here, most of my board members, Ralph Harrison, Tom Bach, Eila Tilkardt, Jorge Santiago, and Gary Open. So, thank you for having us here today. I'm just going to give you a little update on what's going on at the Boys and Girls Club. For those of you that don't know, we are an after-school and now a summer program. We are open every day from two to eight PM. We offer a very general after-school program where kids come in, they separate into age groups, and rotate through different areas. We have a homework room where all of the kids are asked to do their homework, it's incentive-based, so they get PowerPoints for doing their homework, and PowerPoints equal prizes, so kids love doing their homework. and PowerPoints equal prizes, so kids love doing their homework. We have a games room where we have pool tables and bumper pool tables and lots of fun. We have our gym area, we have the outside areas, and the kids rotate through these different areas. In addition to all those, we also offer a free daily snack. Last year, we gave out forty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-two snacks, thanks to a partnership with ShopRite and the Connecticut Food Bank. In addition, one of our main huge increases over the past year is that we opened a separate building. So we now operate out of both Simon Lake School and Westshore Recreation Center. This allowed us to separate our program, so we now have a teen center, which is where Westshore Rec is, and our elementary school-age kids are over in Simon Lake. Our membership numbers have increased. Last year at this time, we had two-hundred-and-fifty-seven members. This year, I just pulled our numbers today, and we have three-hundred-and-forty-nine members. So we have nearly a forty percent increase in our membership. We only charge our members a very small fee of fifty dollars a year to come to our after-school program. And last year, we charged a hundred-and-fifty dollars for our summer program. It costs us, obviously, much more money to do that, to run our program, but we are a dedicated board and committed to keeping our membership fees low for our kids. So we do all of our fundraising and grant writing, and everybody works very hard to make sure we increase our budget. Every year, we do increase our budget, and we do get more money. However, our membership grows quicker than we can grow our budget, which is why I'm asking for the increase today. Does anybody have any questions?
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Hi, Megan. Thank you, guys, for, thank you to the board and every, satisfying the needs of what these kids have today that need to be satisfied. You had mentioned, I don't think you mentioned, even though you are, per pupil or per member expenditure, what does it come out to be?
It's nearly a thousand dollars per child.
How much?
A thousand dollars per child.
One thousand?
Yeah.
How many employees do we, is there at the board?
Up until about two weeks ago, there was only two full-time staff. I now greatly have a third full-time staff in, and we have fourteen part-time staff.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions from the board to Boys and Girls Club? Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How is it working out with the two locations? So younger kids are in the old school?
Yes.
And then the older kids are in the Westshore? And how is that working out?
It's tremendous. It really allowed us to separate our program and be able to offer age-specific programs. So for the older kids, we have Money Matters and Career Launch Programs, whereas the younger kids were able to focus on smart moves and running programs and different things based on their needs. So it's really been tremendous. And I think it also helped to increase our membership because parents are happy that the kids are separated. We're almost out of room again, so that's my only challenge, is even more room I get, the more kids that come, and the more waiting lists I have. So we're growing very quickly.
Well, thank you. It's nice to see you have a full staff here, too. It's nice to see everyone.
They're a great board. They're very, very supportive, very grateful.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're asking for a hundred thousand? And they're recommending seventy thousand or eighty thousand? Seventy thousand? And your service or your membership has increased forty-something percent? Where else have you had increased funding from other areas?
We're always researching new grants. We were able to secure some additional grants. We are working on some corporate partnerships. And in addition, expanding our fundraising and our special events. So we are going to also be holding a five K this year, so we've expanded to four major specialty events, so.
So how much, just a follow-up, how much has your budget increased or funding increased from last year to this year?
Last year to this year, last year, our budget was three-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and this year, it's three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Thank you. Can you just mention your four major fundraisers? Because you guys do a terrific job.
I will, actually, I will mention all our fundraisers. So we have Getaways Galore, which is going to be May fifteenth at Costa Zara. That's our dinner auction. It's our largest financial fundraiser that we have. We have a five K that we're going to be running down at Walnut Beach on August second. Go on our website to find out information on that, boysandgirlsclubmilford.com. And we have Pumpkins on the Pier, which is October seventeenth, which is a very fun family pumpkin festival. And Dodgeball, which we just had a couple of weeks ago. So that was a very fun community event with adult dodgeball tournament. Yes, so that's one of our smaller fundraisers.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Meg, is there a waiting list? Are you able to satisfy all the requests that, if they want to join?
I currently am right now at our peak, so we are not able to accept any new members at this time.
So you have a waiting list?
Yes, and there's a larger waiting list for our summer program. So for summer, based on our constraints of our building, we're only able to take a hundred-and-fifty kids, and I will have a waiting list for my summer program.
So what kind of numbers on the waiting list? Waiting to get into the program?
They're not, well, it's not finished yet because we've pretty much just opened membership for our summer program on Monday to the public, and I have about thirty spots left at this point.
Regular membership, is there a waiting list?
No, we just, literally just filled up. So at this point, if anybody tries to get in.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up, have you worked with the Board of Education as far as busing from a school to the Boys Club? Or have a satellite program on the other side town? Thank you.
Just give us a building.
Megan, if Jorge could take the mic, just so we capture his voice in some of these responses, too. It does swivel a little bit.
I just wanted to quickly follow up in terms of the waitlist and the number of people who want to be on this. Is it more of a space or funding issue? I know it's both, but if you had the funding, would you have the space?
It's a little bit of both. Today, we don't have the physical space to add any more kids. If we had more space, then we could go for more funding, because we could go, for example, one of our granters is the Department of Juvenile, Office of Juvenile Protection. So if we're serving more kids, that grant gets bumped up. But we can't serve more kids because physically, it's not safe to continue to put kids. So it's a little bit of both.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was just curious, is that why you had to add the third staff member? Is it because of the increase in kids? So is there a mandate, you need to have so many adults in regards to how many children?
Boys and Girls Clubs are not a licensed program. We have a sanction through the state of Connecticut. All Boys and Girls Clubs throughout the country have that. But we still follow ratios. So a current licensing ratios would be one to ten for younger kids and one to twenty-five for older kids. And we still follow all-state ratios, just to make sure our program is safe.
So presently, you are in compliance with three?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you, Megan, and you and your staff for the great job you're doing for the kids. Once again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I invite everybody down for a tour of the Boys and Girls Club just to see what we're doing when the kids are there.
Next on the hearing schedule is account number four-eight-one-five, Veterans Graves, page eighty-nine.
I'm just filling in for Tom Cody Jr. He was obligated to attend the annual dinner for the Milford Cemetery Association. And also, Tom Behren is also attending that. So whether they're planning to drop in later on in the evening, I don't know. But I just thought I'd maybe sketch out a few things that might be helpful. I think that the Veterans Graves Preservation Commission, I think, tends to be somewhat of a steady.
Sir, could you state for the record your name? Could you state for the record your name?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Richard Shea. Yes, I'm new on the commission, so I'm just kind of fumbling my way through as best I can.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, I think the, based on my understanding, the Veterans Graves Preservation Commission has probably a pretty steady flow as far as their activities are concerned. And at the Finance Committee meeting, Tom Cody Jr. spelled out a lot of the things that are done, such as a flagpole for the veterans' circle a while back and flowers for the veterans' grave areas, along with some other things. And so I can't say too much else, except I think that, maybe I can throw in a few things here, loose ends in here that might be of some interest. I'm planning to distribute thirty-six Betsy Ross Revolutionary War flags on the graves of the Revolutionary War veterans in the old Milford Cemetery. And this is a bit of a task because in the past, they've been unable to do this because the gravestones have deteriorated. And so over a period of the past year, I've been able to reconstruct and locate the Revolutionary War veteran graves. And so I took the initiative to ask Tom Cody, the chairman, for permission to purchase those flags and to distribute them on May twenty-third in anticipation of Memorial Day. And once again, it's somewhat of a task because a lot of the stones are deteriorated, and they're not marked with traditional veterans' headstones or anything like that. So, but I was able to consult with a poster they have on the premises, which identifies the name of all the Revolutionary War veterans, and then also the locations of their graves, so that I was able to locate all of the graves by consulting with that poster. So I'm planning to carry that out on May twenty-third. Another thing that I want to suggest to Tom Cody Jr., being chairman, is I'm interested in the possibility of providing a small monument in memory of Joseph Plum Martin, who was a Revolutionary War veteran from Milford who participated throughout the whole Revolutionary War. And he is buried in Maine, but I was going to suggest a small monument in the old cemetery, you know, in memory of him. Seeing he was a Revolutionary War veteran from Milford. Also, he wrote a diary of about three or four hundred pages, which is of great interest to historians of the Revolutionary War, period. And we also, on the Hall of Honor in the Parsons Center, we have a plaque there. So that's another, you know, another possibility. So just putting a couple of things out there that may be of some interest, is the type of things we're looking to do and the types of things that have been done. But I'm unable to speak for Tom Cody Jr. because he's the chairman, so he's the person who's really in charge of the whole situation. So I don't know if there's much else I can add. I'm just, like I said, I'm just filling in. So if there's anything I can add or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Does anyone have any questions? Alderman Casey.
Through you, so these things you're planning, are you able to meet those? Are your needs met with the amount of funding you receive right now? The stuff that you just talked about, are you able to, you know?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, the stuff that you discussed, are you able to meet your needs with the amount of funding you're receiving? Or is the funding adequate for you?
I really can't hear what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Stuff that you're receiving, is the funding adequate? The stuff?
I think the funding has been traditionally adequate. And my impression, if I'm not mistaken, is that any unused monies, I think, returned to the general fund possibly? I don't know. I mean, I can't speak for that, you know? I'm just, you know? But I think the funding has been sufficient in the past, I think, and so. But as far as the details and particulars of that, you'd have to check with Tom.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, thank you for identifying our veterans from the Revolutionary War, and probably not easily identified, but through your patience and time, you've been able to find them and be able to put a flag on their grave, too. And I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry if my presentation is a little rough, but I wasn't expecting to speak for the commission tonight. So, and once again, as possible, the other gentlemen may show up later on in the evening to speak for themselves.
Is there any more questions for the veterans' graves? Before he leaves? Thank you, Mr. Gray, for your presentation. Mr. Shea, sorry. Next account on the hearing schedule is number four-eight-one-six, Milford Flotilla, page ninety.
Good evening, Chairman Vitale, members of the board, Mayor Blake, city officials. My name is Dan Kiley. I'm a member of the Flotilla Seventy-three. I'm also a member of the Executive Committee for the Flotilla. I'm here to speak on behalf of our Flotilla Commander, Paul Probeno, this evening, who was not able to make it. First of all, I want to thank the committee for their opportunity to speak. The Flotilla supports the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary here in Milford. As a corporation, we operate both a base building as well as our patrol vessel. The Flotilla's been operating in Milford since nineteen forty-two, from our base at Hellwig Street. Last year, the Flotilla contributed over thirteen thousand volunteer hours to the Coast Guard Auxiliary and thirteen hundred hours underway on Long Island Sound. This is done in promotion of boating safety, inspection of navigational aids, and performance of safety patrols for boaters through various marine events throughout the city of Milford, as well as Long Island Sound, in conjunction with the active-duty Coast Guard. Additionally, the Flotilla conducts boating safety and navigational courses for students and local municipalities, which added nearly four hundred certified boating instructions last year from our base in downtown Milford. As we continue to promote boating safety and increase the awareness of the boating safety courses held here in Milford, the auxiliary and the corporation need to maintain a base in our vessel. We do this in connection with the U.S. Coast Guard under Department of Homeland Security. The funds received from the city are used to help defer a part of the cost of this maintenance for both the building and the vessel. They help us provide the funding to put the boat in the water, take it out, do the necessary repairs. And for anybody who owns a boat, they really know the acronym of BOAT stands for Breakout Another Thousand. So it's a constant maintenance for us. It's truly a working vessel. Our current vessel is almost twenty years old, so there's a lot of maintenance that is going into that. As we look at maintaining the original additional operating costs, we receive that through donations, such as a free slip from the Milford Yacht Club, as well as the rest of the funding falls on our Flotilla members, with limited support from the Coast Guard itself. To do this, we raise funds and volunteer service and time from our members. Because of generous report from the city, the corporation and members continually recognize top-performing Flotilla within our district and are standard for other Flotillas in the area. So on behalf of Paul, our Flotilla Commander, as well as the seventy members of the Flotilla, we want to thank you for your consideration in this funding. And I'll open it up to any questions.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Dan, what's the total budget?
Our total operating budget is just under twenty thousand dollars. I'm sorry, yeah, just under twenty thousand dollars. That goes for the base itself, as well as the vessel. On top of that, we are still recouping some of the losses that we incurred during the hurricanes a number of years ago, which totaled over forty-five thousand dollars in damage to the base and facilities.
Any more questions for Dan? Seeing none, thank you, Dan, for your presentation, and thank you for all of your work that you do for the. The next. The next account on the hearing schedule is number, account number four-eight-two-two, Cemetery Association, page ninety-one. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item on the hearing schedule.
Does anybody have any questions?
Well, there's nobody going to answer them anyways. Account number four-one-five-seven, Harbor Commission, page one-hundred-and-ten.
Ray Swift, Director of Milford Listman Landing. We had a successful year last year. Milford, I believe, still maintains its status as one of the best destinations in the sound, because of its proximity to downtown. And everything's fallen into place. The years kind of blend one into another, the same events, the same weekends. We have a few, we've had some inquiries from two different groups to come in this, this year. And one of the things we've done to bring some groups and more boaters in during the somewhat off-season, June and September, is to offer them a two-for-one on the weekend, or a three-day stay for the price of two, which has worked out pretty good. We've got some, you know, filled the marina up a couple of times, just, just doing that on weekends where we may have twelve, fourteen, fifteen boats. So, we're doing what we can to attract them, but downtown seems to do most of the attracting, so.
How much damage did we get from this nasty winter we just got through going through?
Yeah, it was kind of a slow-motion disaster, you know? Hurricanes come, and the effects are felt over a couple hours. This took about six weeks to happen, and we've got about eighteen pilings that need to be reset, and we straightened out, I believe, fourteen pilings, you know, where they come along in a chain. So, we, we'll get the pilings reset. Eight of them need to be replaced, because they actually broke, and that's scheduled to take place within the next week or so.
Plenty of funds in your account to take care of all that damage?
Yeah, I've been talking to finance, our financial director and the mayor, and we seem to be in good shape there.
Alderman Girman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Vitro. Does insurance take care of any of that, the pilings?
No, no.
No, huh?
And that's been asked quite a few times, but from what I understand, marinas, where the bulk of our damage was to the pilings, is that they, they're not insurable.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, and there's nothing, there's not much that can be done to prevent this damage in the future. Is that fair to say, or is there anything we can do?
You know what? There is. I mean, I took a couple extra steps at the beginning of the season, with laying our bubbler system down, and I laid it on the outside of the docks, but it couldn't keep up with the ice, with the intention of, you know, I'm down there with a two-by-four, breaking the ice around the pilings, and then one day, I come down Factory Lane, and they had lifted overnight. It is, I suppose if I had another ten ice cedars, which are the propeller-driven ones, maybe we could have, I could have prepared a little better for it, but it turned out to be, you know, one of the harshest winters in thirty years, so. At one point, I was a little disappointed, but it just got to the point where, you know, I'll have to put it together again in the spring, you know? It just-
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Vitro. Hi, Ray, how you doing?
Good, you? Where you been?
Slapped out today. But, you know, through all of the estimated cost of what the damage would be, have you any idea what it's going to cost us to straighten out the pilings?
I've got a quote of twenty, it's going to cost twenty-two thousand dollars to reset them.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yeah. A piling is eleven hundred to replace, we have eight of them, and there's approximately eighteen that need to be reset at five hundred apiece.
Okay, and we're, and we're able to do it? We, we have the funds that we're not worried about not meeting that obligation, right?
Correct.
Good. And thanks for the job you do. It's great pleasure to be-
Oh, well, thank you.
Any more questions for the, for Ray? Alderman Veccharelli.
Well, yours isn't the only facility. As I look down in the harbor, it's like a lot of those poles that I've never seen bent, are bent or snapped. It was the coldest, what, February, second coldest since we've been keeping records. So, yeah, it must have been very difficult to try to keep up, as it was, it was a cold winter. But I have one quick question for you. I know you have two parking spaces down there, for the people that want to come down with City of Milford stickers. We're hoping to get three there. In the dirt area, near the, where that little pavilion-type thing is, near the dinghies, is, are people allowed to go, like, with the bumper, if they have a City of Milford sticker, and they're not going with a trailer? I mean, you know, I was hoping we would have at least three parking spots for people without trailers, there's only two marked. Is there, I know I ask you this every year, but, you know, is there some way you can add another one to end market, so that we can have that?
You know, I could put one anywhere, but what it's going to do during the height of the season is take away a spot for a car with a trailer, which we don't have enough for on the weekends. During the week, I see the same people park down there, and I know the area you're talking about, people park there, and, and some of them spend quite a bit of time there. I haven't fielded any complaints from, you may have, but I haven't heard of any, and I haven't felt, fielded any complaints from, from citizens about parking over there. Again-
Well, we have an ordinance. The ordinance says there shall be up to three.
Up to three.
Yeah. So, the ordinance was established because, as far as I was concerned, I didn't care about the people that come from West Haven and Orange and use our facilities. There were a fair amount of people that used to go down there and park, just to walk around the docks down there, throw their fishing pole in, and just really to gather and talk about the day. Used to be, Listman used to put his pulse on the, on the people down there every morning. So, we went from really having a very nice group of people that used to hang out there, to not having any. So, the ordinance was established to at least get three, and there's only two. So, every year, I ask you if you would please establish that-
Yeah, no, we've, we've discussed this, you know, again, just about every year. How about if, when the Devon Boat Ramp gets put back in place, and, and the load there is reduced somewhat? We're overwhelmed with customers on the weekend. And I have Bobby Auger over there, and I don't know how, I don't know what we'd do without him, because he's directing traffic, he's telling them where to park, he's making sure that the small trailers go where they need to be, so that a large one doesn't block them in. If I, like I said, if, I'll designate, you could designate as many as you want, but it's going to take away from somebody who wants to launch their boat and put a trailer in that spot.
But I wanted five spots there, and like I-
Oh, I know you didn't.
And like I said, I, you know, I am really-
That's unreasonable, because it's a designated boat ramp.
I'm more concerned about the citizens of Milford. And that's why we basically negotiated and have an ordinance that establishes these three spots. And so, I would like you to put the third spot in. And it's not, I'm not asking you to do it on my behalf, I'm asking you if you would please follow the ordinance.
And we've-
Mr. Chairman, I can assure you that I'll work with Ray and our traffic division, and the folks from Public Works to improve the situation. We can certainly improve access for folks that just want to come down. We'll bring back our progress to you at the next full Board of Alderman meeting, or prior to the adoption of this budget, but I will work with Ray and the folks from Public Works to make the situation better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Girman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Vitro. I just want to say, you know, thank you to all the good work you guys do down on your staff, as far as the plannings and the grounds. A lot of times goes unsaid, but you guys do a really nice job down there, keeping the harbor in really top shape. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I've got five new this year, and it's, it's going to be a, it's going to be a good season, you know? You get some, some, some new help in there, and they're all enthusiastic, they're all juniors or seniors in high school, and, or just going into college, looking for that summer job, which are hard to come by these days, so I'm looking forward to a good season.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Casey.
I just want to thank for the effort you do. I know, like, on weekends, when people are trying to get, you know, use the ramp, and they, you know, they have the permit, it's sometimes hard to try to juggle that, so I know sometimes they go across the street and stuff like that, having to park at the, the field. I just want to, you know, thank you for the work you do for the city.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it can be a challenge, and, and if you do happen to be down there, thank Bobby Auger for, for what he does. He's, he's, you know, it's a, all he wants to do is work Saturday and Sunday, and every Monday holiday you can get, and we couldn't do without him.
Any more questions for Ray? Seeing none, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
And thanks for all the great work you do for the harbor. Next on the hearing schedule, the account number four-two-one-nine, Human Resources Department, page forty-one.
I'm Tanya Barnes, I'm the Human Resources Director for the City of Milford. Our, my department is responsible for the human resources functions, civil service functions, pension administrator, administration, and part of benefits administration. I will go quickly through some major accomplishments that we completed this year, and then I will talk a little bit about the reorganization that I'm proposing. But overall, with the reorganization proposal that I have, and the slight increases in the membership line and the test and evaluation, the budget that I'm requesting has a decrease of one-point-nine percent. Some of the major accomplishments that we completed this year, we had to go and seek a new service provider for banking administration, for pension administration. It used to be done by Bank of America, and they were no longer providing that type of service, so we're now with Wells Fargo, and it's been very productive. They provided new technology, and they've implemented new efficiencies. We implemented the Employee of the Month program, which has been very well-received by all of the employees, and it's a very nice way to recognize employees throughout the year. We implemented the Wellness Committee. Through that, we conducted a survey of all of our employees, we held a health fair, we are sponsoring a walking challenge, and are going to be putting together some lunch and learns for our employees. In collaboration with the City Attorney's Office, we negotiated new pension agreements for police and fire. I was the, one of the members of the Selection Committee for the new healthcare consultants, which are going to result in significant savings for the city with the new consultants that we have, Milliman. I did bring onboard a new testing software, it's called OPAC, where we do testing for all of our administrative functions, administrative positions, and it's been very, very successful. The police department is actually going to be utilizing the software as well in their search for an administrative position that they currently have. We conducted a dependent eligibility audit, that also yielded savings of about two-hundred thousand dollars. That was for both city and Board of Education. We did an audit for all of the CDL holders, to ensure that the employees who were required to have a CDL per their job description indeed held one, and we went through that list and ensured that everybody did have one. Some people were no longer in positions that needed a CDL license and vice versa, so we did clean that up, and then we, we had a new list for our vendor that handles the CDL testing per the DOT. Then we ensured that all of those employees received a, the copy of a policy of the drug and alcohol policy, signed off on the acknowledgement, and those were placed in their personnel file. Some of the key recruitments that we did this year, we hired a new tax collector, CDBG Coordinator, a new Director of Health, some administrative positions in the Health Department and Engineering Department, Animal Control Officer, Building Inspector A. In the Human Services Department, we hired the bookkeeper slash secretary and outreach worker. We did recruitment for public health nurses, and various position in Public Works. Many of these positions, for instance, in Public Works, we had a maintainer position. There were a couple of slots open, but we had over a hundred applications that we had to process through. And now, in, in terms of the reorganization, there is, my office had a, or has, an administrative assistant personnel position, and a, it had a pension administrator. They're both in the, in the Milford City Hire Employee Union. The pension administrator, the person who was in that position, transferred out of the office, creating a vacancy. At that point, I, in assessing through the period of time that I've been with the city, determined that the best, the best way that we could move forward was to create actually a benefit specialist. We had a benefit administrator, that the only function that they worked on was benefit administration. We have about five-hundred-and-fifty employees for the city. Some months, we may have five retirees, some months, we may have ten, but we were paying someone for a full-time position, thirty-seven hours, to just work on that one particular function. And I thought it would be best if we created a benefit specialist position, in keeping with best practices and standards, that could not only work on pension administration, but could also do benefits administration of all types, health, life insurance, and so forth. Right now, it's segmented. New hire will come to our office, and they will do their new hire paperwork. Once they become an active employee, if they have any issues with their insurance, they go to the accounting department. If someone's going to retire, they would come to our office to the pension piece, but their health insurance was done through the accounting department. So, with this position, we're looking to really create a one-stop shop. It's not all going to happen immediately. We will do that transition slowly and working in conjunction with the Finance Department, but at least as the person comes on, they will take on the benefit administration, I'm sorry, the pension administration, they will take on the new hire benefits, and they will take on the retiree benefits piece as well. So, it was a much more efficient way to do the, the work. Bringing in a new person, they would start at the minimum, and, and the same, in keeping with all of the projects that we've been working on, the administrative, the administrative assistant really was working beyond the capacity of, or is working beyond the capacity of a administrative assistant. It's more in keeping with, as HR generalists. There's a lot of, of work that she's been doing with the classifications, with the testing, and analyzing the data once we run those exams, and, and assisting with reviewing all of the applications as they come, prescreening them, and so doing a lot more in-depth and more complex work than an administrative assistant would do. And so, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll open it to the-
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mrs. Barnes. Is this your first year, before the, the budget?
This is my, my fir-, I came last year, but the budget had been prepared.
Right, so this is your first year, okay. I do want to commend you. I know you've done a lot to spearhead some of the changes, the necessary changes in the title of the, of the department itself, and I know there's a lot of things that you brought to bear, and I commend you and your staff for that. I did have a question. These two positions in your office, just so I understand, the, it has it in here that the position of the pension administrator is now the benefit specialist. This represents the, basically, the change in what your department had asked, and what the Finance Department ultimately approved. Am I correct in understanding, you're telling me now, the new benefit specialist, formerly the pension administrator, is a full-time employee, but is actually work, are they working- working a full thirty-seven point five hours?
Well, right now, I have a vacancy.
But that position will be a full-time position?
Yes. And it always was. The pension administrator was a full-time position, thirty-seven and a half hours.
And, right, and the benefit specialist will be as well, as you've indicated the handout. The benefit, the, excuse me, the human resources generalist, formerly the HR administrative assistant, represents the upgrade in this, and you've explained what that upgrade in the responsibilities entails. Is this, who is, has that change been affected already, and if so, who is doing that? Who is in that position now? Or is it a new individual, or is it the person that was the administrator?
The person who is the, I'm sorry, the administrative assistant. She is working at a higher capacity. She's performing work that is beyond an administrative assistant functions.
So is this an upgrade in terms of the civil service designation of this? Was it, did this upgrade for this individual, was that, did that follow all whatever civil service protocols would be required of that?
We will, if, once the budget is approved, we will go through the civil service piece of it. The benefits specialist, we did go through civil service. Once it became vacant, we revised the job description, re-titled the job. We did go before the Civil Service Commission, and they approved the change. So I was waiting for this approval, so then I can go to change the title.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Hi, Tanya.
Hello.
Help me to understand, if the administrative, the present administrative assistant moves into a higher level position?
Correct.
Is there further training that has to be taking place? Civil service exams? How about if something runs awry within that position with further qualifications of that individual? How is it then handled? And the other thing, I think I have some idea, but thirty-seven and a half hours resonates as a full-time employee?
Correct.
It's no longer forty-hour work week?
Per the contract, it's a thirty-seven and a half hour position.
You'll help me understand that movement of that administrative assistant to the upgrade position?
Sure. The person currently really is working at a much higher level. She is not just an administrative assistant where she maintains calendar and does basic letters and things of that nature. She is working with the exams. She is working with the applications that come in, prescreening those applications for me. I obviously have been providing a lot of training to her with my personal experience for eighteen, nineteen years in the human resources field and my own personal training and keeping up with my education in human resources. So I have lent a lot of my training to her, and a lot of these things she has been learning, and she has taken them on, and she has been doing a fantastic job. So the OPAC system, we did not have that software, and it was something that when I brought on, I trained her in how to utilize that software. I trained her in how to create the spreadsheets and the analysis. I obviously was doing them, then training her, having to do them, and then I would follow up on her work to ensure that she was doing them correctly. So she has already taken on a lot of these responsibilities.
Just as a follow-up, but the fact remains, there's an upgrade in the testing. So there wasn't a requirement of a test prior to this new position, number one, and I thought you said, number two, there was a salary range. There's no salary range? It just goes to fifty-two, one forty-three?
Yes, I'm sorry. That would be in the, the position currently is in grade twenty-six, so they requested it would go to grade twenty-seven, step four, not all the way to the maximum of the step. That decision was made in, as I was going through the budget process and made my request to the mayor. We, one of the things we were looking was to make sure that the budget was either budget neutral or there was savings, and certainly by putting the person in the step four, there would be savings. In wages alone, there are gonna be savings of about $5,371. Overall budget, there's about $4,000, $3,900 in savings. And so that was done through conversations with mayor and the Director of Finance.
And the point would be that the upgrade in the testing, there was no testing prior to the level of?
No. My understanding was that we would need to go through the Board of Alderman first, and once the position was approved by the Board of Alderman, then we would go to civil service.
But you're already saying that person's in that position already?
She's been working in that capacity, but she's still just the administrative assistant. She currently is the administrative assistant, but she has been working at a much higher capacity.
So literally, that position's vacant, the new position?
Mr. Chair, through you, it's not that it's vacant, it doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, so therefore, you're creating a new position, correct?
Yes.
And so the process of creating a new position, hiring for that position, or is there an automatic movement is gonna be, because you're saying you're training this individual, so that individual will automatically move into that upgrade as administrative assistant?
Correct.
Without taking the test, proper testing first, the civil service?
Well, my understanding, as I said, is that we needed to come through the Board of Alderman first, create the position, and then we can upgrade, because what I'm requesting is to have the current position be upgraded, so the individual that's in the position can be in the new position.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's counterintuitive. You're saying that individual will be into that position, but if we create the position, if we create the position after the budget session, the position is vacant, and now you have to hire for that position, and they have to go through the testing first, I would assume.
And we certainly, yes, can, will do that if that is necessary.
And that will be the process, right?
Correct.
Alderman Casey.
Through you, so just to be clear, this current employee is still receiving the original salary, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, they have not had any increase in their wages, no.
Any more questions for Tanya? Seeing none, thank you very much, Tanya.
Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Thank you and your staff for the work they do. The next account on our hearing schedule is number 4145, Pension Board, page thirty.
Did they move that one?
My apologies, sorry.
Just so that you know, you'll be here for the next one also.
For the civil service one, yes.
I'm sorry, I should've, I should've told you that. Give you a little, give you a little walking exercise. Thank you.
No problem. In the pension board, we have a reduction in the secretarial fees. We currently are paying a secretary to take minutes, and my goal is that the benefit specialists, because they attend the meetings anyway, and we do pay them overtime, that they will, once they're trained in their job and they've come onboard and they've comfortable, that they will take on the role of the secretarial function as well, since we are already paying them to be and attend the meetings. So there is a reduction there of $600 for half the year.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. If you're saying that that individual is gonna be working overtime, what is her hourly salary, and what is the OT? Is it time and a half?
Yes, but currently, the way it's set up, that person does attend the meetings, they are paid time and a half, and then we pay additionally another person to take the minutes.
So they're paid time and a half to attend the meeting?
Correct.
For what reason?
Per their contract. Anything after seven and a half hours, they get overtime.
I know, but why be at that particular meeting compensated?
Because they put together the agenda for the pension board, and they do all of the administrative function for the pension board, so they do attend the meetings. It's, that's been the history forever.
Wow, okay. And you're changing other things, and I think maybe you should be looking into that, too. The issue here is that I'm, so if she's attending the meeting at OT, she's making overtime, is she gonna be, she's not gonna be compensated for the board minutes?
No, because she's already compensated. She's there, and she's, the minutes are recorded, and the next day she can prepare them.
So the process of recording minutes, she's gonna be paid because she's there taking the minutes at that particular point in time? What about transcribing them and getting them out the next day or within the five, seven days? She's gonna be compensated again for those hours?
They will be done during her regular work hours.
Mr. Chairman, if I could further clarify, the way that this process has worked, again, since at least the nineteen seventies, is this position, this pension specialist administrator that currently exists acts as the administrator for the pension board, answers questions, provides information, and then there has been a separate recording secretary. The goal to streamline this process is such that this new benefit specialist would act as both the secretary as well as the administrator for this board. This board relies on the information that this pension specialist, soon-to-be benefit specialist brings. It's always been part of that position, at least since the nineteen seventies. We're looking to streamline and make more efficient this role, so that we, instead of having two individuals, we have one individual. So this is a, this is a proposal that would improve that situation.
I can see the streamlining, but the expense could be bigger, because if you, if you're taking and you're transposing and trans, doing the minutes the next day, an hour, an hour and a half, out of her time that she spends on other things, so that means she has that other time during her workday to accomplish those projects, the extra project, or that's gonna push her time into OT the next day because she can't finish her workload at that particular point in time? It doesn't, you know, it just doesn't sit well with me, that's all.
I do not anticipate, and my expectation is that there will not be any overtime incurred beyond attending the meeting.
But if one has a work schedule within the day to add that transcribing of the minutes and to put them out and so forth, and do whatever you need to do with that, that's taking away from her job, right?
Sure, but then that's a point when we reprioritize as to what needs to be done that day and what could be moved to the next day.
Alderman Beccarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What would be the net savings, once the, once this person is broken in to take the minutes and we no longer need two people there? What would the savings be per year?
Currently, I'm requesting a fifty percent savings, so $600. Right now, the budget is for $1,200, or last year was for $1,200. The secretary's been receiving $100 to attend the meetings and take minutes, and then we will see the following year how it's working, and it could be decreased even further. In my civil service commission, the administrative assistant attends the meetings, takes the minutes, and puts it together, and she still has a full schedule and a full workload, but she's capable of handling that. And that budget, I only have $200, and it's just in case she's on vacation or something happens that we may need to, and we need to have a meeting that we would be able to have some funds to pay a recording secretary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Tanya regarding the pension board? Seeing none, we'll move on to account number 4151, Civil Service Commission, page thirty-one. Tanya?
That's unchanged, is the same as last year's budget. As I stated, there's just $200 there for in case of emergencies, and we only utilized one time, one instance had to have a recording secretary.
Any questions for Tanya regarding the Civil Service Commission? Seeing none, thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Next account on the hearing schedule is account number 4131, Law Department, page twenty-four.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board of Alderman, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Bircham, and City Attorney. Here presenting the City Attorney's Office, proposed budget for your review and consideration. In terms of what my office has done and been involved in over the course of the last year, as indicated by Ms. Barnes, we were part of the negotiations that resulted in the new contracts for the pension and fire, pension agreements. We are currently in negotiations with MEA for their collective bargaining agreement, and we're at the beginning for the police and fire dispatch working agreements. We were involved in the negotiation ultimate agreement, which, for the interlocal solid waste agreement. We have been involved in the review, drafting, preparation, as well as the administration of numerous grants. We have appeared on behalf of the city and defended numerous workers' compensation matters involving city employees. We participated on the selection interview committee for the new health director and the school slash city medical advisor. We have negotiated the acquisition and transfer of land parcels. We have negotiated a five percent decrease in our liability insurance premium with our insurance carrier, Kirma, which is gonna result in probably a net savings of $80,000. We continue to represent the city in a variety of land use and tax appeals, many of which tax appeals have been brought before this board that you're aware of. We have researched and drafted for your review and consideration numerous ordinances. We have acquired several properties via tax and/or blight foreclosure over the last year. And that's pretty much a summary. In terms of our budget itself, essentially remains neutral. The only increases, well, you don't see, but will be our contractual wage adjustments, our operating expenses remain stagnant at $7,650. It's essentially our, reflects our online research contractual agreement. I know it's been a questions that I've answered before. Our postage, I'm sorry, our postage, our mileage reimbursement, our various professional membership fees and dues, which are, constitute our operational expenses. That's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, Alderman Snaffery.
First, I'd like to compliment you and the Law Department on the wonderful job you've done for the city. I just have one question. Why is the salary for the assistant city attorney more than the salary for the city attorney?
Mr. Chair, through you, she works more and she's smarter than I am. No, she is smarter. No, having said that, the assistant city attorney is a full-time position. My position changed, I believe, in 2008 with the retirement of Marilyn Lipton, and then Max Case came on, and the position was changed, and I believe there was an approximate thirty percent cut in the budgeted salary for the position of city attorney, which made it a part-time position. I think the mandate or expectation from the city is that the city attorney spend twenty-four hours a week working on behalf of the city. I believe I do a little more than that, but that's...
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to the city attorney. The necessity of hardcover law books, help me understand that.
There isn't.
There isn't? When we talk about law books, are they ebooks or hardcover?
The law books are the computer, it's the computer.
Oh, okay.
It's the online. Really, the law books, when you've come through my office, they're not fake, they're real, they may not be good law anymore. You can ask Alderman Casey, it's, one, they're expensive, two, we continue to get some updates on some reporters that Matthew Woods prefers, but we've tried to wean him off. He's a little more old-school.
It's all electronic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Law Department? Seeing none, thanks, John.
Thank you.
Next one, stay right there, don't move the mouse. The next account on the hearing schedule is account number 4132, Ethics Commission, page 25.
Good evening. Each year, I present the Ethics Commission budget. I've been fortunate that we haven't had too much activity with the Ethics Commission. It's an as-needed basis, but my office is charged with administering it. As you'll note, the secretarial fees are $100, and miscellaneous professional fees are what the intent of those budgeted line items are for recording fees, if there's a hearing, and the miscellaneous professional fees are if we have to hire an independent fact-finder, if you will. And the training expenses, I assume, are for a seminar for members of the Ethics Commission to attend, postage is for notices. You know, we haven't had the need over the last several years in my tenure with the city to tap into this budget. That being said, I do believe it's small, it's woefully inadequate, but we haven't had to use it, so I can't establish that to you. I would think, though, for secretarial fees for the recording, $100 may cover one hearing. If it went to two, we'd go over the budget. In terms of miscellaneous professional fees, if we had to hire somebody to be a fact-finder, that may cover one to two nights of their service. That being said, we'll make do with what it is, but that's all I have to say about the Ethics Commission.
Any questions regarding the Ethics Commission? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Bircham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you very much for all the work that you do for the city with the Ethics Commission and the Law Department. The next account on the hearing schedule is account number 4340, Animal Control, page 59.
My name is Scott Alinson. I'm currently the head animal control officer for Milford. We also do service Orange, Connecticut, which is going good. We haven't received too many complaints, and they seem happy with us still. Basically, what we do is enforce dog laws and pick up strays. We also run a feral cat program, which is a trap neuter and release program to help keep the feral cat population down. And I'm not really asking for anything in the budget. The only exception, and we are going to go another route with us with it, is I was requesting a new vehicle. However, we are gonna use some of the Orange money for that. Any questions?
Alderman Stanford.
Yes, I noticed that one of the assistant animal control officers is not in the budget anymore. Is that a longstanding thing?
No, I've actually moved, it was my old position. The previous head animal control officer retired, I moved up, and then that position was zeroed out, my old position.
I see. So you don't have a replacement for that?
No, right now, we've actually got myself and one officer, and then an officer slash kennel keeper. So technically, we do have kind of three officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Animal Control? Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, what's the deal with coyotes? Do you have coyotes in Milford yet?
We probably do. I mean, that one mountain lion, I didn't think we had mountain lions around here, and then it ended up run over on a highway, so, yeah, we would have highway coyotes. In fact, before they were hunted, there was the eastern coyote, which would have been prevalent in this area when colonists arrived.
Your department does monitor that sort of thing, though, right? I mean, you get, I mean, I know it's mainly...
Not really. We don't, we keep track of where they are, but there isn't a lot we can do. We are unarmed, so we can't dispatch coyotes or other wildlife. But we work with the state and let them know when there's coyote sightings, and then they, the DEP can come in and do what they need to do.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Milford Animal Control is exclusively domesticated animals. The Department of Agriculture has a division that gets involved with coyotes and bobcats and other animals that are not domesticated. So we do call them in, and I know that our animal control does coordinate and work with the state on those type of situations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more questions for Animal Control? Seeing none, thank you, Scott, for your presentation, and thank you for the work you do for Orange and Milford.
Thank you, Anna. Have a good evening.
The next account on our hearing schedule is number 4803, Fine Arts Council, page 87.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see a representative from the Fine Arts Council, but I will ask that they attend a subsequent hearing and notify the secretary to make sure that you folks have them on your agenda for either tomorrow evening or the following subsequent meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to the next account on the hearing schedule, account number 4121, Golf Course, page 112.
And I don't see Mr. Austin or another representative, so I will again do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to the next account on the hearing schedule was number 4818, Historic District Commission, page 90.
Mr. Chairman, generally, a representative does not attend from the historic district, but if you would like, or it's the pleasure of the board to have them attend, this account is relatively de minimis. If you'd like them to come, I will also notify them.
How about the next one, which is Historic District, number two?
Same.
Same, thank you. We'll move on to the next account on our hearing schedule will be four, number 4819, Milford Progress Incorporated, page 91.
Good evening. My name is Scott Moulton. I'm the current president for Milford Progress, also known as MPI. What I wanted to do was just spend a moment recapping what we accomplished in 2014, and then just lay out for you what we plan on accomplishing in 2015. With me is Jorge Santiago. He is also one of the board members of MPI. MPI consists of 20 volunteers and is known as the Downtown Economic Agency for the city. Last year, we had, made a lot of great strides in all but eliminating all of our expenses. I know we lost funding last year, and a big reason for that is because roughly 50% of our funding was going towards administrative expenses. So we have actually eliminated those administrative expenses. We've even got it to the point where our liability insurance has been cut in half. So right now, we're running basically at about a $750 expense to run our organization. So I would confidently say there's not a lot of places that you can allocate funding to that the vast majority of that funding will go to specific projects here in the city. So I think we've made some really good strides with that. Some other accomplishments that we've made last year was we've been working with the Department of Public Works. You've probably noticed a few of those big blue wayfinding signs. We've committed to installing and funding roughly 14 to 16 signs at the moment, with more signs to follow. Chris Salee has about 10 or 12 ready to go, but just with the past winter, he's been a little preoccupied with other things and hasn't had a chance to get the signs up. But we've been working with DPW to make sure those signs do get installed, and they're gonna be installed all throughout the city. We've also been working with Julian Ash. You've probably heard about the train trestle mural and lighting. That was actually an idea formed by MPI several years ago, and it's finally coming to fruition. So that is something that we've been working with Julian. We actually have a liaison that is meeting with her on a regular basis to work that out. Through December of 2014, so through last year, we actually ran at a deficit. We had a loss, we're showing a loss of a little over $1,700. And this year's budget, we're having a loss or projecting a loss of about $14,000 to $15,000. One of the main reasons this year why we are showing such a loss is because we're making a very big commitment to revitalizing the Adopt a Spot program. So you probably see throughout the town, those wooden signs, a lot of them are fairly dilapidated, falling down, some of the landscape has gone in disrepair. Jorge is actually chairing that for MPI, and he's chairing that because he's actually got a lot of experience in the Adopt a Spot program. He was one of the members of the Adopt a Spot program at Stratford. So it's, he's got it almost at a turnkey point at this moment. But there's 22 spots throughout the city. We're gonna revitalize all 22 spots. The estimated cost is $1,000 per spot. And if you're familiar with the top of Cherry Street there, you've got that big blue wayfinding sign, and then just, if you're looking at it to the right, there is a Adopt a Spot sign by Kiwanis. DPW, we're also working with them, they're going to create those smaller signs, which will replace all those wooden signs that you see throughout the city. So they'll be more efficient, they won't have that wear and tear. As spots are adopted, as spots need to be updated, we could just replace the signage at a much, much less cost than having to replace an entire sign. The other thing that MPI is gonna do with the Adopt a Spot programs, in the past, whoever adopted that spot was responsible for actually maintaining it and upkeep. We're gonna take on that responsibility, and we're gonna hire three landscapers to actually maintain those spots. They're gonna plant seasonal flowers, they're gonna cut and mow as needed, and just generally maintain those spots throughout the year. One, and I wouldn't call it a problem, but one obstacle for us right now is the majority of those spots, we collect zero revenue on, because most of those spots are adopted by nonprofits. So you'll have an organization like the Boys and Girls Club that will adopt the spot, and we do not charge them anything for those locations. So if you're looking at what we're requesting for funding this year, it's, I would say, significantly more than what we received last year. I think we went and got a dollar last year, and this year, we're requesting $25,000. The objective is really to raise seed money to make sure the Adopt a Spot program is something that becomes a viable, ongoing revenue-producing project for MPI. We figure, once we get it off the ground, the initial plan, the first few years, is to charge $500 per spot, and then after the first couple of years, we're going to charge per location. So prime locations would command a higher adoption cost. So we do anticipate after about two to three years, that being something that actually brings revenue into MPI, that we then can start to become self-sustaining at that point. That's really one of the main projects and focuses that we're working on right now. We have a timeline that is laid out. I would say we're probably about a month behind that timeline, mainly because of the winter we had. Right now, we have a landscaper agreeing to maintaining and upkeeping 10 spots, and Chris Salee's team has 10 of those smaller, blue signs ready to go, which hopefully, within the next four to six weeks, we have up and moving forward on those. That's really all I have as far as a formal presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Scott, what, on those ways of finding signs, how many we, with the city, have when it's completed, that project?
We agreed initially, just to help get things going with DPW, to fund 14 to 16 signs, with the option to continue to do more. So it's hard to put an exact number on the final number, but I would say within the next year or so, you know, just as quick as Chris's team can get them up, I would imagine that, you know, within the next year or so, you'd have a good 14 to 16 more signs up throughout the city. MPI, several years ago, when the wayfinding project started, actually scouted out, I think the number was astronomical, like 150 different locations. So we've dramatically brought that down and made it a little bit of a tighter list, and we are working off that list with Chris's team. So any places that we can put a sign with the path of least resistance, not having to deal with the state, we're gonna continue to move forward on that. So I would almost say that's an ongoing project that we'll continue to work with them on.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to Scott. If you can clarify for me the Adopt a Spot. So my understanding was that a business would adopt a spot, advertise, you know, that'd be their privilege of advertising. So you're saying it costs $1,000 a year for that spot? And I would imagine, I would think that they would maintain all the property, but now you're saying you're taking over that, and it's gonna cost you X amount?
Well, the initial cost to renovate all the spots in year one is approximately $1,000. That $1,000 in year one goes to the cost of the sign, because we're gonna replace all those signs. So the smaller Adopt a Spot signs are gonna look very similar to those wayfinding signs. So it'll have a nice consistency throughout the city, because those Adopt a Spot signs are spread throughout the city. But each one of those little signs costs about $400 to $500, and then we anticipate another $400 to $500 per spot to update the landscaping, pruning, flowers, things like that. Once that initial phase is complete, then we anticipate about $200 to $300 a year, depending on the spot, for flowers, landscape maintenance. The landscapers are going to donate their services, but we still have to provide and pay for the florals and those types of things, the materials. But like I said earlier, that is something that we anticipate being able to charge, you know, on the low end, $500. You know, I'm sure some spots, we can command $1,000, $1,500, depending on the location. Again, in the past, nonprofits have not been charged for that, and we want to continue that. So what we also plan to do is pair nonprofits with for-profits. So you may see, you know, a spot adopted by Boys and Girls Club, sponsored by Milford Bank, something to that effect. We don't wanna have an extra, you know, a nonprofit bear an extra cost for those spots. Sorry. The prior state was that spots were only charged $100, and they would maintain their own spots. So what we've been left with is spots that haven't been maintained. You know, I've driven around the city personally and taken pictures of all 22 spots, and there are some that just haven't been maintained because, you know, nonprofit may take it over, the current president of that nonprofit thinks it's a great idea, and then the next incoming president doesn't think it's such a... And then, the next incoming president doesn't think it's such a great idea, so it stops being taken care of. The sign gets dilapidated, the spot falls apart. What we're moving now is to a model where we're charging an appropriate price for that spot and having professionals maintain the spots. So, that's why there really has been no money for it because at 100 bucks and most of them going free to nonprofits, it just hasn't been able to work.
Yeah, I would imagine you just kick them out and put a new person in there. I mean, that was the whole point, I would imagine.
Correct.
Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman. Eventually, this program is, will be self-funding, right? It's the initial that you're looking for.
That's the objective, yes. I don't think it's going to be, you know, a massive moneymaker, but at least just to kind of fill our kitty. So, as different projects come up, we're not scrambling for funding. I think one big misnomer right now is that MPI has this war chest of funds. A lot of the funds have already been spoken for. A lot of them are restricted. We're probably only sitting on about $25,000 to $30,000 and showing a $14,000 loss this year.
Well, can we have that? I mean, because I have the, I think it's the last minutes I've received from October, shows 103,000. Now, I know that 30,000 of that is encumbered from Devon, I believe, the Devon revitalization.
That's correct.
Is the rest of the money due for the larger wayfinding signs or what's that?
There's 103, 102,000, and I'm happy to provide that if anybody wants it. I've got a list of it here. And we also have a list of a lot of the dilapidated Adopt a Spot signs, so if you wanted to take a look at that. The, we've got about $60,000 in restricted or liability, so 30,000 of that is from Devon revitalization that we were entrusted with to make sure that those funds are used specifically for Devon. Part of the funding that we're providing DPW to do that wayfinding includes sections on the sign directing people to Devon. So, we believe that does satisfy some of that revitalization usage there. We've committed $14,000, $15,000 already to DPW for wayfinding. And we've also committed $15,000 to the Adopt a Spot program. So, that's about $60,000 right there. We anticipate having to find another $7,000 to $10,000 for Adopt a Spot. And then additionally, we had earmarked doing a joint project with the city this year for an estimated cost of $10,000, which would, Julian Ash and I have met and talking about doing some additional signage down by the train station, almost like a, you know, you are here map and directing you to different restaurants and things. But, it's also too, it's one of those, I mean, any organization, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't want to just run your funding down to literally zero and then have to really kind of start over at the beginning of every single year. No business would operate that way. So, you know, when all the dust settles, we do try to maintain about $20,000 to $30,000 as an operating account. So, as projects, as opportunities, as needs arise, we have the money to do so and we don't have to necessarily pass on it. But again, to your point, the point of the Adopt a Spot program, to revitalize that, that'll help continue to raise those funds and give us the ability to do more projects and have that availability.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Scott, thank you for the extensive report.
Thank you.
For a better understanding of what actually you're doing. Just a couple of things that I'd like to kind of understand a little better. It was confusing with the Adopt a Spot, but hopefully, it will be fully encumbered by the sponsor for that spot and there'll be a fee that will be worked in with landscaping, keeping up with the sign. So, in other words, if a private concern is sponsoring a spot, like you say, depending on where it is, the visual piece on it, there will be a price to be paid on a yearly paid piece that will not cost you anything. It'll be all awash with the sponsor.
Correct. That's correct. What we plan on charging would include the cost to maintain, you know.
Right. Now, is there a waiting list or do you have potential sponsors?
Of the 22, and Jorge may be able to just better clarify, but it's my understanding, there's 23 spots available. All 23 do have a name on them. Several of them have just had literally no work done on them. But, just in talking to people, I mean, I can probably list about five or 10 people that'd be happy to take one over. And we would also envision this project being something that, if there are other spots that we can actually beautify and adopt, then to continue to grow the program from there.
And I agree. Some were cared for and some were not cared for. So, the consistency will make it a lot better for the whole city. Signage, way signs. Are you saying that Milford Public Works are making the signs, getting it? Are you footing the entire bill or is the city, city giving something to the way signs also?
We're, it's my understanding, we're flipping the bill. The, in talking with Chris Saley, depending on the size of the sign, they're roughly $1,000 to $1,400 per sign and we're flipping the cost for that. So, you know, some spots will have a much larger sign. There's some spots on a tighter street that may be a little bit smaller, but we are paying for that.
And it's a great idea. Just to consider, when you come into Cherry Street and when you come in to the other side of town near Carvel, those lights hitting that sign makes it very difficult to see the signs because of the blue background and the font size. Maybe there's some more clarification that could be, the visual piece can be better with a different font or something. I don't know, but it's very difficult. There's light shines on it and you can't read it at all.
Yeah, and that's actually been brought to our attention a few times. And it's my understanding through Chris that those are DOT specs and that's, it is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Just to clarify, the sign that was installed on, at the end of Cherry Street, that was the initial one. Since then, the font size has been increased from a six-inch letter to an eight-inch letter. So, that initial sign, the font will be also increased as the project rolls forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, yeah, as you drive around town, you see some of these Adopt a Spots. It looks like they've been abandoned. And it looks as though you've addressed the problem very well. It's going to be maintained, you know, it'll be sustainable and sustained. And if we need a name change, we don't have to replace everything, we can do a name change very easily and it's really going to help beautify the city. I think you've got a very good plan in place and I think that it's probably going to work very well and it'll probably last. So, no matter, you know, if there are changes and this and that, it looks like you've looked at it very well and it might just work out for us. So, thank you for your time and effort in this.
Thank you for the kind words. Thank you.
Alderman Anderson. Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Jorge. It's really serendipitous that the Adopt a Spot locations also coexist with some of the wayfinding signs that have gone up. And just to offer a suggestion in response to one of my colleagues, it'd be great to be able to see those areas landscaped in such a way that it really would dim some of the impact maybe that headlights would have on those particular signs. It would, it's worth looking into, just a suggestion.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott, a thought just came to my mind to phrase some of the future costs on those Adopt a Spots. When you go through the trouble and the expense of making the sign initially for that particular Adopt a Spot, can the sponsoring organization or the organization that adopts the spot, can those names or company names, can they be like slid out and replaced with another sign?
Yes. Yeah, that's the, that's the way those signs are going to be designed. So, from year to year, if one organization wants to adopt it, one does not, they can be slid out. The contracts are, are they one-year contracts? They're going to be one-year contracts with the adopters or adoptees? And then, speaking with Chris Saley, the signs are going to be sheet metal with vinyl on top. So, the next year, it's just removing the vinyl and putting new vinyl up. So, you're only paying the $50 for creating the vinyl. The sheet metal stays.
Great, great. Good idea. Any more questions for MPI? Seeing none, thank you, Scott, for your presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. And I also have, if you want, I don't know where I should leave them, but it includes a summary, a couple of different pictures of some of the dilapidated Adopt a Spots, balance sheet, budget, and a listing of all the members, the 20 volunteers of MPI. So, I don't know where you.
Scott, we could tell by the amount.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
And thank you too, Scott, for all the work you do. It's MPI for the city. Help you to find the Adopt a Spots and the wayfinding signs. The next item on the hearing schedule, next account, is account number 4161, who's a Tonic River Estuary Committee. Is there anyone here for that?
Mr. Chair, that, that account has been zeroed out or should be zeroed out.
Okay. Thank you. And then, the next account on the hearing schedule will be account number 4162, open space, page 32. Page 34.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and other members of the board. Let me first take this opportunity to wish everybody a Happy Earth Day, only fitting. And my name is Steve Johnson and working in the role of the Open Space and Natural Resource Agent for the City of Milford. I'd like to just give a brief overview of what I've been focused on. It's been a very active year and I've been really continuing to focus on the mission of protecting and preserving the open space and the natural resources that we have here in Milford. I believe that these offer some very important environmental, social, and economic benefits for the city. And it's also really important for conserving these in terms of our own quality of life in Milford and also all life that depends on healthy soils, water, and air. Creating a more resilient Milford in the face of the climate change, flooding, coastal sea level rise will only benefit from healthier natural systems. In terms of a couple of highlights, what I've been focused on first in terms of grant funding, I'm in the process of implementing approximately 200, I mean, $2,251,000 in grant funds that the largest is the Connecticut Steep Grant for the Beaver Brook Project, also $45,000 from a CDBG DR grant, also associated with the Beaver Brook property. Department of Ag grant for water quality monitoring. And then, there's an upcoming grant that we received from USDA for NRCS for Emergency Watershed Protection Flood Plane Easement that's estimated value at $1,700,000. Working with the Finance Director this last year, we also identified seven different open space accounts and put those in a matrix so we know what funds are specifically focused for open space and what the approval processes are for those, to be able to use those monies. A large amount of my effort is focused around public outreach, education, building awareness on a variety of different issues. I've done that through a couple of different opportunities over the year to give presentations such as to the Milford Garden Club, recently to the Women Redefining Retirement Group. I've attended and sponsored about four different topic tables at the recent Energy and Environment Fair. We've inspired a small group of Milford citizens to take the Frog Watch Citizen Science Training. And it's really, the frogs are kind of the canary in the coal mine. So, by monitoring what frogs are living in what parts of the city, you get indications on what the water quality, environment quality is like. And that's undergoing right now. We're in the process of, May 1st, we're going to have, 450 kindergartners will have, receive purple comb flower seedlings associated through the Milford Conservation Commission. And we're going to be working with the Board of Ed to do this as part of a Mother's Day, but also to celebrate the city's official city flower, that resolution from last year. So, we're working with the Board of Ed, Milford Garden Club, and Robert Treat Farm has been very gracious in donating all of the plant materials and supplies. Milford Earth Day is going to be taking place on Sunday, May 17th. We're working to help beautify the Wilcox Park Upper Shipyard Lane, which is part of the new East Coast Greenway that the Department of Public Works put in a sidewalk late last year and also a bike way is going to be going in. So, we've got a substantial amount of plantings. Again, we're working to collaborate with Milford Trees, Milford Garden Club, Milford Environmental Protection Initiative. So, we're trying to embrace a lot of different groups to get them involved. We've been, I've been working with a number of different scouts, projects over the last year. Working with the Milford Board of Ed in terms of summer science enrichment programs up at Eisenhower Park. And then, this year, on June 6th, we're going to be sponsoring the Third Connecticut Trails Day Walk in Milford at two sites, at Mondo Ponds and Solomon Property. And we're also going to be sponsoring this year with the, collaborating with the Connecticut Audubon Paddle in the Charles E. Wheeler Marsh. That's advertised statewide through the Connecticut Forest and Parks Association. And then, you know, also collaborating with the Connecticut Audubon, they're now doing bird walks and owl prowls in open space properties. So, they're highlighting not only the birding aspect, but promoting, helping to promote the Milford open spaces. I've been fortunate to really, in my work in, with different departments, to be part of about 10, 10 different committees and boards on a variety of different levels, including hazard mitigation, sustainability, wellness, Founder's Walk, and many others. So, that's another really satisfying part of what I've been doing. As a quick update, continuing to refine the open space inventory. That is a, working with the assessor and the GIS, we want to get to the point where we can properly document and map what our open spaces are. It's really, right now, in the court of the assessor to correct some, some property descriptions in acreages, fairly minor, but we want to get those accurate and then we can get the information to GIS so that those can be updated properly. And one of the benefits of that type of inventory, which now is about 639 properties that are documented, all the deeds and maps documented, but also it becomes a valuable tool like recently for the community rating system, the CRS. Part of documenting our open space in the coastal flood zones and the tidal areas helps to benefit, indeed restricted properties like that help to go to a positive CRS rating. Lastly, I've been involved with just a number of different training about, over this last year. A lot of it is on weekends and it's, but it's something I enjoy and I get a lot of benefit out of it. This, in the, in the middle of a, doing a Connecticut Master Wildlife Conservationist Training Program, that's a 70-hour program. That's meeting during the weekday. But, part of that program is you agree to give back 40 hours of volunteer time towards conservationist efforts. And we've got a number of other people that have gone through this program in Milford. So, it's another opportunity to get out into contact with the public, help make those connections and those values for our open space properties. So, that's the summary and certainly welcome any questions. questions that any of you might have.
Alderman Anderson.
Thanks for the update Steve, and congratulations on the inclusion of your position in the city budget this year. Question through you, Mr. Chairman, for Finance Director. Noted that the benefits that are paid along with the position would be included elsewhere in our budget document, and I wondered what the amount of those benefits are, number one, and number two, out of which fund, open space fund are they being paid?
Mr. Chairman, through you, just so I understand the question, are you talking about benefits in the future, if this position were to be in the general fund?
Yes, those benefits would be funded through Department 4710, which is the Employee Benefits Section of the General Fund, and they would be spread out through the different line items such as FICA, FICA Medicare, and longevity, when and if applicable.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the open space? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Not a question, but just a compliment, just, I hear a lot of really good things that, all the work that you're doing in town. So, I just wanted to pass that on. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Stanford.
Yes, I want to add my congratulations to you, and you have a great group of admirers who have called me and asked me to see to it that you get on the budget. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Johnson. Good evening. Thank you for all your efforts as well. My question is in regards to the grants that you've realized, it's been brought to this board's attention that there's been specific grants that can be used under maintenance, and that would actually cover your position and your salary, if it was at this board's pleasure. I just wanted to ask you your opinion on that, if that is, is that true, that that grant, or a grant that you have secured, that you know of, that would cover maintenance and would be eligible to pay your salary?
Do you know which grant you're referring to?
I would think the mayor would know. I think it was the last grant that was brought before the board. I know that the mayor mentioned on record that if it was up to this board, that we can use that revenue to pay for your salary.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps I can shed a little bit of additional explanation. For the past two years, he's been, Mr. Johnson has been paid out of monies that come in for open space, in lieu of a specific donation of open space by developers, when there is a subdivision of a property. So, the fund allows for either acquisition or maintenance of open space, and that's the fund from which we've been drawing for the, for the past two years. Over the past year, the City of Milford has brought in in excess of $20 million worth of grants, above and beyond the, the normal grants that we bring in in any given year. It's been a tremendous year for that. A lot of that money has come in because of storm resiliency, because Milford has been affected so significantly from Storm Irene and Storm Sandy. But above and beyond even that, there are particular grants that Mr. Johnson has really identified and applied for on his own, two of which he mentioned tonight, the STEEP Grant from last year. That's a $500,000 grant. A part of it could be used for the administration of that grant. However, the other grant, approximately $1.7 million, that is, that is a grant to deed restrict certain parcels of land, mostly marsh-like parcels of land that couldn't be developed, couldn't be built. We will put deed restrictions on those, that's the intent, and we will receive funding through the United States Department of Agriculture's NRCS program. That money, this board has to make a decision on. At this point, it will come into the general fund. If this board chooses to specifically allocate it for a particular purpose and create a fund, perhaps for open space, perhaps for the maintenance of open space, or for the acquisition of open space, or whatever your pleasure, that's something that this board can, can weigh in on. At this point, though, those monies and other grant monies are coming directly to the general fund. The general fund is therefore paying for all of these positions that we have encumbered in our operating budget, including this proposed position. Again, this entire budget lists two new positions, one in the accounting office, and this open space position. It's been my philosophy that we are not increasing the size of the budget, not increasing the, the net number of positions in the city, whereas we have reallocated resources within this budget. We've also reduced the total number of positions by two, whereas we've increased, or added these positions, so that the net increase is zero. So, there is no additional positions overall, no new net positions overall, for this budget that's before you tonight.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you. I just want to compliment you for your service. Through you to the mayor, I just want to follow up on that issue. I know when Mr. Johnson's position was created, before we even identified who's going to be there, you came to planning and zoning when I was on the board, and you, you said this job, this position is going to be created, and this is going to be, the money from the open space fund would be seed money, to fund this position until we find, we obtain money from, through grants and other funding, to, to fund the salary. It appears that, you know, we're not doing that any longer, we're going to be funding it through the, the city budget. Are we still trying to find money to, to fund the, the actual position, or is that just going to be something we're going to now fund through the, through the, the City of Milford?
Well, I would say that a, a large focus, a significant focus of Mr. Johnson's job, Mr. Johnson's job has been grant writing, first identifying the grants, then writing the grants, and above and beyond, I think, any of our expectations, he's been successful in securing the grants, grants that way more than offset the, the cost of his position. I mean, just the, just the grant through the NRCS, approximately $1.7 million, is, that's going to come directly into the general fund, is going to offset that position. That's, I don't want to say found money for the City of Milford, but that's a significant amount of money that, but for the fact that we had this open space position, nobody else would have likely identified it. So, this has paid dividends, and then some.
Yeah, one point of clarification on the, also on that NRCS grant, which is, that estimated value is 1.7 million. The properties that are identified are mostly city properties. There are some properties that are privately owned, so those individuals would be receiving those, the payment for the value of the conservation easement on their properties, and then that property would become part of the city at that time. Also, there's a small number of properties that are part of the Milford Land Trust, so they would benefit from that easement portion. But the majority of the properties are city properties. And then lastly, they're going to be, as part of the NRCS, NRCS program, their goal is also help to restore healthy marsh systems. So, they're going to have expenses that will go into restoring those marsh systems. So, certainly the city is going to be benefiting from that, and it will be before the board here to determine where the monies that we receive, if we decide to move forward at that point, how those get allocated. But the, the total value of the grant is 1.7, of which the city will be getting portions of that, but we won't know what that amount is until we go further down the process here.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mr. Johnson. We do, again, commend everything that you do, and all these grants that you are realizing, the millions of dollars that you're bringing back to the city, is, you know, a reflection on you, in this position, and we appreciate your effort. And we know that this position was taken by you in good faith, and it was created by this board in good faith, with the understanding that it would be funded through the open space fund. Now that you've gotten into the position, and you're able to realize these other grants, which have the maintenance vehicle tied with them, that gives us another opportunity to pay for your position, not just through open space, but through the grants that you realize. So, I just think it's a fundamental disagreement and philosophy that I have with Mayor Blake. I feel that, you know, people expect us, the taxpayers, to be creative, to think out of the box, and I believe that the position was created with that understanding. And I feel, moving forward, it should be maintained for that reason. So, I think, rather than divert this expense onto the taxpayers, I think that we should continue in this fashion. And I just want to be crystal clear, that it has no reflection on your performance. It's just a fundamental disagreement that we have with Mayor Blake, because essentially, he's creating another position, and there's really no need for it. If we didn't have the funding, then that would be another conversation. But, we do have the funding. We have the open space fund, and we have the grants. So, I think that we need to be more responsible to the taxpayer, and continue in this fashion, because it's proven to be successful. So, I'd just like to make that point, and again, thank you for all your efforts.
Alderman Vecarelli.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, I want to thank you for all the money that you've brought to the City of Milford. I, I used to think that planning and zoning brought a lot of money, revenue, to the City of Milford, in the fees that they collected. When I look at how much money, one individual, for applying for all these grants, and seeking out every bit of information that you could possibly find, I certainly am very, very, very happy that, you know, we are able to have you as a permanent member of the City of Milford, as our open space manager. We have a ton of open space. We need to be able to manage this. You have been proven to, done a very good job. You've come with very high recommendations, and the, the, just the amount of money that you brought to the city already, would have paid for your position well after I was dead and in the grave. So, I appreciate this. It's, it's a zero for the taxpayers. I mean, we didn't hire anybody, no. There was two positions that we didn't fill, and two positions we did, new positions, so it's a zero, and, and you, you helped the City of Milford tremendously. So, I myself am extremely happy that we were able to fit you into this budget. Really, no cost to the city taxpayers, and what a tremendous benefit you're going to be to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you. Through you, I just want to be clear that I, I greatly appreciate the services, and when this position was created, I think you more than exceeded what our expectations of everybody involved, and we greatly appreciate what you've done. I, I think my, my concern is, I just don't understand, through you to the mayor, or anybody who wants to answer, is why we just can't be honest that we're having a shift in policy. I know when the position was created, that it was anticipated that it'd be funded through funds, and I think the taxpayers at least should understand that it is a shift in policy. I'm not even questioning the policy, I'm just reiterating the fact that it is a change when the position was created. And, you know, I know it's a minor point perhaps, but I think it is something that, that I think, I think we owe it to the, to the citizens to be clear on what, what occurred, and how the position of the, the policy of the city has changed, moving forward. I'm not necessarily questioning it, but I think we should just reiterate what occurred.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Anderson.
Thank you sir. While I appreciate the comments that have been made by the minority members of the board, I don't feel that this is the proper evening, or the proper forum, for a discussion with Mr. Johnson. We will have budget deliberations subsequent to tonight. That would be the opportunity, I, I believe, to debate all of the departments that come before us, and make final decisions prior to the adoption of the budget. And I just wanted that to be clear, from my perspective, and on the record. Thank you.
Alderman Stanford, did you have your hand up?
Ah, yes, I did. Thank you. I, I agree with Alderman Anderson. This is not the time or place to do this. We have lots of time to discuss whether we want to fund this position as a part of the city budget, or through grants. And tonight is not the night to do that.
Alderman Ginatazio.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, through you. I'd just like to make the point that, it's not a debate, you know, we're just making the point that, through Steve's efforts, we mentioned grants, we mentioned how the position's been funded, and he's before us this evening, and we want to be clear that you are creating a position that has already been funded without taxpayer dollars. So, there's a point that has been made. You say that it's not an increase, but it is an increase. His position, his salary has been paid through open space, and it continue, it can continue to be paid that way. We have the mayor's budget proposal book in front of us. He proposed this in the budget as a position. So, tonight is the night that we discuss whether this should be a position or not. So, I think that you're being a little, a little disingenuous, when you say that we shouldn't be discussing this matter. This is the time. The time is now.
Any more questions for Mr. Johnson? Alderman Shaw.
And mine really is a question, and I do agree with Alderman Anderson. We have plenty of times debated, we should be getting the facts, and, and there's one thing, I've just been curious. You're listed as a seasonal temporary, is that correct?
Yes.
And what is the ramifications of, really, somebody who is neither seasonal nor temporary, being so labeled? Is there...
And I know that our HR director has left for the evening, but seasonal temporary is really just that. It's generally reserved for positions like lifeguards, that operate only in the, in the summertime, or positions like camp counselors, that operate for that period of time that camp is in session. That truly is the, the nature of this position, from a labor standpoint. I don't know if we should discuss it in an open forum, but our Finance Director, our HR Director, has strongly encouraged us to only have seasonal temporary employees as seasonal temporary employees. Either put them under the budget, or, or limit the, the hours, limit the timeframes to a, a real true seasonal temporary position.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Alderman Shaw. Alderman Gorman.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, through you...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Steve. Originally, when you were hired, we talked about part of the job would be to coordinate volunteers, and that'd be a big part of, you know, keeping costs down by gathering volunteers together for many projects within town. And I know you've had some resistance with unions and, you know, who is responsible for what and who can do what, and can you expand on that and tell me where we're going with that, if we made any progress with that, because that was a big, important part of the position as well?
Okay. Yes, absolutely. The, you're correct, and early on, and that was my goal, and had some great response to opportunities for doing that. And the good news is, is in terms of the volunteer activities that I am encouraged and can get support in doing in the city, when we're actually doing service work, if you will, like on Open Space, is like on an Earth Day project. And in addition, I've got full support in terms of the Public Works, in terms of any scouting activities, girl scouts, boy scouts, or school-type projects. And then the process that I've been asked to follow is to, any other projects, volunteer projects, is to request approvals through the different departments that I'm, you know, potentially could be impacting, and asking for permission to do things. You know, and I have asked on certain projects to be able to do things, and I've been told politely, no. So it is, you know, part of what I'm also trying to do is working to build that relationship and that trust with Public Works, and because I honestly believe they do care about the conditions in Milford and want to make this city the best it can be. And so I'm looking to try to build those relationships and work with them. Last year during Eisenhower Park, the trails were getting overgrown, and so we had the opportunity to work with Public Works, and they went in and did a good job of opening up the trails. And I was working with them in a capacity to help advise them where the trails were, but, you know, I couldn't do any of the work myself or bring in volunteers, so... But it's something I'm still continuing to strive toward, because I believe it is something that we can, there's certainly a benefit that a certain number of volunteers can do. There's a certain level of expertise that they can bring to the table, and it's in working in areas that quite honestly are off the beaten path, they're not in maintained parks and things of that nature. So it is still a continued goal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Open Space account? Seeing none, thank you, Steve. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for everybody's kind comments, too. Thank you.
And thank you very much for all the work, hard work you do for the city. The next account, under the hearing schedule, will be account number 4813, Bridges Community Support, page 89.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Good evening, Mayor Blake. He was there a minute ago. My name is Barbara DiMauro, and I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer of Bridges, a community support system. And with me tonight I have Michelle Lemire, the Chair of our Board, and Kathleen Sheehan, our Chief Executive, our Chief Financial Officer. Do you want my job? As many of you know, Bridges was founded in 1957, so we've been embedded in the Milford community for many decades. We provide a range of comprehensive, community-based mental health and addiction services to the residents of our geographic area, which is Milford, West Haven, and Orange. We respond to the needs of children, adolescents, adults, families, and the elderly with a range of prevention, mental health, addiction recovery, case management, and primary care services. We serve approximately 5,000 people annually at sites in Milford, West Haven, and Orange. Our main site, however, is in, is in Milford on Bridgeport Avenue. Our service area covers a population of over 200,000 adults and children, many whom come to us when they are at their most vulnerable and at risk, dealing with problems related to trauma and loss, economic and employment challenges, and serious mental illness. I'd like Ms. Lemire to say a few words before we respond to any questions that you may have.
I'm a little vertically challenged, so I'm going to have to scooch. On behalf of the board, I just wanted to say that I'm honored to be here as the board chair, and the board is very grateful for all the years of support on the legislative front from our local politicians. As you know, we provide an essential healthcare service to Milford as the only full-service mental health and service, excuse me, substance abuse service in the community, and we are facing critical challenges, struggling to assure the attainable services in difficult economic times. And our partnership with you is a critical link in caring for some of the most vulnerable children, adults, and families in Milford.
As noted in the narrative that you may have in front of you, we are experiencing cuts in our grants from the state of Connecticut. Seventy percent of our funding comes from the state of Connecticut in block grants. That's the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, the Department of Children and Families, and, and the Department of Developmental Services. We, in this fiscal year, have had a number of recisions, cuts, and we are anticipating more severe cuts in fiscal year 16. And we're respectfully requesting that you find the resources to continue our funding, as you have previously, at $350,000.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? I'm sure there are questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Barbara? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, ladies, for, and I know the job you do, and I know the job that Bridges does because I sit on the board of directors. Can you elaborate a little bit more on the impact that the cuts from the state to, not us, not only the nonprofit, Bridges is a nonprofit, but how it would affect the Met residents of Milford?
Well, I think the, right now, the most severe cuts will be to our adult services, our adult outpatient services, and the, we've already had position eliminations due to the cuts that we've already experienced. If we need to make more cuts in our staffing, we will not be able to serve the high volume of adults in Milford that we're currently serving. We have people that come to us from, you know, inpatient hospitalizations, directly from the Department of Corrections, DOC, and we have, we work with parents in Milford who are struggling to effectively parent their children, and they come to us for help. The majority of the clients that come to us require medication to manage their symptoms, and we have a staff of psychiatrists and advanced nurse practitioners that provide the medication management. We fear that the cuts will have to take place in that, what we call the medical department as well, and we will not be able to provide essential medication for, for people who need it. So I think that, and given that we're here in Milford, as we've said, the only full-service, comprehensive, community behavioral health agency, and that the majority of the clients that we see are, have Husky, you know, Medicaid Title 19, or are uninsured, there is not going to be any place for them to go and get services if we can't see them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, it seemed like last year's budget, there was the beginning of, I believe, the Affordable Care, where federal government was realizing that you may take in more money, and they took money away. So I was wondering, are you now getting more insured people, and are you at least in a wash with, or are you in a loss because of the funding that the government's taking away?
We've actually done some analysis to show that the amount of money that our grants were reduced by is about $200,000 this year, fiscal year 14, 15, I'm sorry. The increase in our fees that we've been able to calculate is about $68,000. So that's, and then, as far as the state is concerned, there's no adjustment going to be made for the difference there. So no, it's not, not coming out quite the way.
Alderman Gurman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. What's your overall budget, and what's this 350, what's the percentage of your budget that we provide?
The 350, actually, I have a budget here, which we had intended to distribute to you along with the narrative, and I have it if you'd like a copy of it. Go ahead. Oh, great. Thanks. So the 350 represents about 2.8 percent. You'll see it reflected as a separate line item in the income section of the budget.
So it's a $12 million budget?
We've actually, in our narrative, we mentioned several additional grants that will be coming into effect for next year that actually bring it up a little over 13 million when we add those new grants in. So this budget was developed, the proposed budget, before those figures were known, so...
And that compares to, what was the budget last year, roughly?
Last year, it was fairly close, about 12.1 million, I believe. So last year, though, again, as mentioned in the narrative, we closed the year with the largest deficit. I've been head of the finance area for 24 years, and last year was the absolute worst we've ever seen for our agency with a deficit of over $250,000. We are, at present, at a breakeven through the end of March for the current year due to the staff layoffs that we put in place, and also an improvement in our third-party fees, that big $68,000. So we do, we have turned a corner on that as far as this year is concerned, so we're feeling very good about that part.
Is there any more questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you very much, Barbara. Thank you for you and your staff for all the fine work you do.
Thank you.
The next account we're going to hear from, from the hearing schedule, will be the 4811 Borough of Woodmont, page 88. Mr. Ed Bonessi.
Thank you very much. It's good to see everybody again.
Ed, just a pause. Our secretary had to leave just for a moment, so just keep in mind.
You can check email or text messages.
Ed, you can proceed.
I'm the warden for the Borough of Woodmont. Kit Schmizer is our finance man, and Burgess. Looks like you pretty much have the same folks, but I always like to let everybody know, as my predecessor did, what Woodmont is and what Woodmont is not. We are not a private beach association. We are a municipality. Within a municipality, we provide all of the public works, street paving, cleaning, grounds maintenance, snow removal on the six miles of roadway on the eastern part of the City of Milford. We augment the city's police budget by providing police coverage during the summer. We have also, in recent years, maintained the beaches, the public beaches on that end of town, the Category G Beach, which is a coveted title that the Army Corps of Engineers has designated, and we have been able to protect that designation at a fair cost. And when I say we're doing it, it's being done out of a separate borough assessment that we make to the, to the residents. This year, we have requested 243,000, and we also had requested either that or our normal, or last year's amount of 220, with some in-kind street paving. I know that in some years in the past, we have been able to do that. Everyone's seen the articles. There's an article that I passed out to you about the Connecticut DOT is about $18 million short. You've got hammered with snow removal. We've got hammered with snow removal. We're $52,000 over our snow removal budget. That money has to come from street paving and the Town Road Aid Fund. Right now, the budget as we have it is going to leave us pretty much with barely being able to do some patching. We will not be able to do much of any street paving, and we have about a half a mile of roadway that's been designated.
what Ed is, has said, we're sort of operating without any rainy day fund in case a disaster hits. We have had to deal with several disasters over the last four, five years with Irene and Sandy, and we're, we're still trying to sort of dig out from that. And as a consequence, we have some money left that, for the remainder of the several months until we, at the end of this fiscal year, which has been slotted for, it was, that what we were anticipating to have more, which we were going to, where it was going to be allocated for some basic street paving, because of the snow removal issue, we don't have that money. So now we're going to have less. So we're going to basically use that to try to do the, a lot of our, the roads in our area got really hammered with this winter, and so there's a lot of, of patching that needs to be done if you're not going to do street paving. So I guess the bottom line is, we do have infrastructure costs that we're, we're having. It used to be that we, we had enough of a grant that was being given to us, or actually, we considered sort of a rebate of, of taxes that we pay, to cover the public works in, in that section of Milford. And we used the grant relative to the cost of everything was, was higher. We haven't had an increase in a number of years in the grant number. And as a consequence, because things are more expensive, we haven't been able to sort of set aside a reserve to build up, let's say, 80,000 or 100,000 dollars to do a section of road and get it done. Instead, we're doing much more of a Band-Aid approach, and, and that's why we're trying to find if there's any additional way to get either a slight increase in, in the yearly grant amounts, so we can start trying to, again, set aside monies and, and sort of a reserve, so that we can do a big project, an 80,000 dollar project at once, or, or try to work out some type of payment in kind by, with the Public Works Department, where we could somehow get resources that way. So I guess the bottom line answer to your question is that, no, we initially requested from the mayor's office more. We requested the same, what we requested more from the, the Finance Department and Finance Board, and, and we're here requesting more from, from you all.
So, so what is that number, to meet the expenses, the anticipated expenses for 2015 and '16?
Well, I mean, the reality is that, that if, if we're looking at an incremental increase in the grant, we take whatever we'd be willing to get. I mean, if, if you, if you're talking about bumping up to 230,000 a year, that's something. I mean, the number that we have is, is 243 here. That is just, I mean, we, we come back every year and say, look, we, we could have this number as, if we were going to actually have the roads in great condition, substantially higher, but we're just trying to show that we actually have more expenses than we can do. And as a, as a practical matter, the infrastructure is declining every year, as compared to what it was maybe seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago.
So the number is 253, is that correct? Total expenses down at the bottom there?
Yes, 253, on the total expenses.
Thank you.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you. I'm just a little bit confused on the department request. When I, when I look at this, it's, you requested the 220, the mayor recommended the 220, and then I would imagine you guys went before the mayor and the Board of Finance, and then they recommended 220. So, you know, you've been with the mayor, and you've been with the Board of Finance. They both recommended 220, and it has in my book that that's what you requested. Now, which, are you telling me that that's, this is not true, that you did not request this 220?
Well, we, we requested, no. That's, that, I, I don't want in any way besmirch any comments. The mayor has been wonderful in terms of dealing with us. The Board of Finance has been very reasonable, and, I mean, we're all in this together. So I, I just, in terms of, of what it says in the, the binder here, that wasn't our initial request. That wasn't our request to the mayor, and it wasn't our request to the Board of Finance, it was our request to you guys. So, if this-
Well, no, I, I understand you're here asking for more money.
Right.
And I, and I would imagine that, you know, you asked for more money with the Finance Board and to the mayor. But the, the question is, is, did you okay the department request for 220,000?
I didn't know we had the opportunity to authorize the mayor or the Finance Board. We plead our case to them, and they come back and say what it is. I never was given the opportunity to say yea or nay.
Well, everybody in this book, all the departments put in what they request. They have a budget, and they say, this is what we need. And then the mayor looks at it, either gives them more or less or the same, and then the Finance Board. And I mean, obviously, you guys have met with both the mayor and the Finance Board, now us. And the question is, is, you know, the 220,000, I understand that you'd need more, and I, and I am looking at your budget. But was, was this what you initially had asked for when you sat down, talking with the mayor?
Yes, it was. I mean, in terms, if you go back and look at the original documentation, it was more than the 220,000. That number was ultimately put in here. We don't have a problem with that. We understand that, in the, at the end of the day, we sat down with the mayor. He wanted to put in the 220,000 that we had last year. The, the Board of Finance listened to us and decided that that was the prudent number based on all of the other competing things that you guys have to, to weigh. We get that. And so, all we are saying is that this is sort of our reality here, and if, if there is an opportunity to, for you all to, to, to provide slightly additional more funding on a yearly basis, that would be helpful. If it's not, we understand. But I'm just saying, i- if you're asking me specifically, do we submit something in writing and say, look, 220,000 is the amount that, that, I know, I know it says it. It said that initially when we met with the-
Well, see, there's, there are some problems here, because if you ask for 220,000, and then that's the Board of Finance recommendations, if you, if you want more money, then the Board of Aldermen are going to need a lot more votes to give you, give you more money to go against the Finance Board. Because now you've been in front of the Finance Board, and this is the figure that they've put down, and it's a department request. So now to come before us and say you need more money after you've been to the Finance Board, it's going to take a lot more votes than if you had initia, than if they had okayed you for the money. So we don't need, we don't need a lot of votes to take money away, but we need a lot of votes to give you money. So, you know, I, I would like to say if the department requests, if you needed more money, that was where you really should have put that in. And then you could have fought the uphill battle from there.
I, I think that, having had this discussion this year, I think that we will know next year to make sure that, that it's included differently in this book. I, I think as a, as a technical matter, the way that, we, we're not a department of Milford. I don't know what the actual rules are for, for approvals of additional monies, as you're saying, needing the additional votes. The, the history of sort of the relationship with Woodmont and Milford as a subdivision, really, of Milford, under the original charters, going back to 1903, is that the, that the Borough of Woodmont is to come to the Aldermen. There's supposed to be a discussion with the Aldermen and an agreement. It's, it's, I think legally treated a little differently than a department, but you may be entirely right that, that as a practical matter, we should make it very clear from the outset next year, what we would, would need.
Alderman Shaw.
And, and through you, thank you. And just to be clear, I don't look at this as a grant. This is a rebate. This is based on what we owe you or compensate for the work that you do in the Borough of Woodmont. Is that correct?
I think-
Equal services. Equal service. So in likelihood, in terms of just looking at this budget, the question that we have is, is this equal service, given that this has stayed steady? Because that's-
I think it's very fair to say that we are trying to replicate what's being done for the rest of Milford in Woodmont with the rebate of monies that we get to do, really, in essence, public works.
What portion of this is, is, is the 220 of your overall budget in the Borough?
The, the overall budget, there's an additional money, additional taxes that are taken from Borough residents, and those taxes, a separate tax bill that goes out, that's used to basically pay for the, the additional police service that's provided in the summers when the beaches are busier. That's, that's the primary expense. There's also a, a portion of it that's allocated to try to set aside money for sand replenishment, sort of erosion control. So there, it's, there are additional incremental things that are done that, that frankly are providing services that, that are a benefit to Milford, because they're Milford beaches. They can be used by anyone, not just Milford residents, but anyone. And so, by providing additional, paying for additional police service and the like, that, that is sort of an additional cost that Woodmont residents bear to sort of make the area nicer, but it benefits everyone.
Chairman doesn't mind. Your idea about in-kind, when I look at this, you're looking at 253,000, but you also have an in-kind of 75,000. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, there was, there's an additional, again, there is an in-kind at the bottom of 70, additional 75,000. There's been some back and forth where we've act, where Woodmont has actually over the last, I think it was over this last, what, eight months, that Woodmont provided monies, basically provided money for public works projects that would have been paid for by Milford. But, I mean, Ed can explain it better in terms of the-
You talked about the sand replenishment?
No, no, the sidewalk stuff, it was the deals that were worked on.
The-
The sidewalk that was done on, maybe even Avenue.
Oh, yes. The, we ended up putting in $27,000. We were told that it was only going to be $7,500 for sidewalks on Grove Street and additional curb and sidewalks along New Haven Avenue. The cost was, apparently, the contractor that bid it out, there wasn't a lot of money, and the Public Works Director, Chris Salee, called me and asked me if the Borough would be able to pick up those additional costs. And I said yes, not knowing what the bottom-line number was, and it ended up being considerably higher than what we had, what we had agreed to. So, and I also know in the past, during my predecessor's time, there was a time when, in lieu of getting an increase in the grant from the city, the city provided the Borough with some additional, not additional, some paving, street paving, of some of the streets.
The, the other purpose of that, that 75,000 provision is that this last, with the, with the whole issue that we had with Sandy and the difficulty in the sort of the Sandy Irene FEMA, getting money back from FEMA to pay for destroyed beaches, the, we have been trying to, to be good stewards of Milford's contract with the Army Corps of Engineers, 50-year contract, which keeps that as a Category G beach, which benefits Milford, because when that beach gets wiped out, the Army Corps will come in and actually pay, as it did, for, for re-nourishment. Because, to, to actually maintain that on a yearly basis, consistent with the terms of the contract, that requires some money, if, if you need to replace some of the rock that's, that's eroded and stuff like that, some of the, the levels that are, need to be done for the beach, which Milford is, is doing now. That was put on there to sort of open the, the lines of discussion with the mayor's office to say, look, we really think, on a going-forward basis, we need to figure out how we continue to stay in compliance with this contract, so we don't ever get to a situation down the road, which almost happened in, over the last year, where Army Corps comes in and says, or FEMA comes in and says, we're not going to pay to, to put all this stuff down on your beaches again, because you're no longer a Category G designated beach, because you, Milford, haven't maintained it. So in, over the past four or five years, we actually, Woodmont, not Milford-
Actually, it's about eight years.
-had paid a couple hundred thousand dollars to put more stuff down on the beach, erosion control stuff on the beach. And that was a major portion of arguing to, to FEMA and Army Corps that, look, we're still in compliance with this contract that Milford has with you guys. So that, the reason why that, part of the reason that was put in there was a talking point with the mayor, for the mayor, to say, can we have this dialogue, how we come up with a way going forward? Because it can't be part of our, you know, basically, the, the 220,000, which we need to do the streets and stuff like this. This is sort of a separate issue. How do we keep these, you know, nice beaches over there, nice beaches? And, and that's going to require a different organization, different money, and a different plan. And so that was sort of, that's a long-winded way of saying, that was an area that I think is important for us all to consider, because it is a, it is a very valuable contract that we don't want to have lapse.
The, the other thing is, Woodmont, because of its geography, and Alderman Gorman can attest to this, because he looks out his window and he sees when these storms come in, storm two days ago, it wreaks havoc along the walkway, the seawall that goes along Woodmont, which is probably one of the longest, longest ones in the city. And we are responsible for keeping the streets open, keeping them clean, and every time there's a storm, that is, that's not part of our basic contract. Anytime there's a storm, that, that work, that goes as extra work, just like overtime work that the city has to pay, just like the overtime that you have to pay for all of the additional snow plowing. We're $52,000 over on our snowplow budget this year. Last year, I think there was $17,000 in storm-related cleanup. And that's a combination of trees, debris that washes up over the wall, not to mention the repairs that have been done, seawalls along, along the area, because we're, we're obligated to maintain those. And when there is a lawsuit, when somebody slips and falls, they, they bring everybody in.
Mr. Chairman, just to, to follow up, and to refresh the recollection, I know that there is newspaper articles about it, but after Storm Sandy, the Army Corps came in and re-nourished and re-engineered the beach. It was about a two-and-a-half million dollar project. They did that on their, the Army Corps did that in-kind or on their own. However, after Storm Irene, as you will recall, we did get reimbursement eventually from FEMA. The city bonded that project. It was approximately $600,000. We went forward with that project. It took us a long time, a lot of headache.
Over two years.
It was a very heavy lift. We got Chris Murphy, our U.S. Senator, involved. We did everything possible to reclaim that money that we were assured, and we eventually got it. We were reimbursed for that-
snow plowing, we're $52,000 over on our snowplow budget this year. Um, last year, I think there was, uh, $17,000 in storm-related cleanup, and that's a combination of trees, um, debris that washes up over the wall, not to mention, um, uh, the repairs that have been done, um, seawalls along, uh, along the area, because we're, we're obligated to maintain those, and when there is a lawsuit, when somebody slips and falls, they, they bring everybody in.
Mr. Chairman, just to, to follow up, uh, and to refresh the recollection, I know that there is newspaper articles about it, but, um, after Storm Sandy, the Army Corps came in and re-nourished and re-engineered the beach, it was about a two-and-a-half million-dollar project, uh, they did that on their, the Army Corps did that, um, in-kind or on their own, however, after Storm Irene, uh, as you will recall, uh, we did get reimbursement eventually from FEMA, uh, the city bonded that project, it was approximately $600,000, uh, we went forward with that project, it took us, uh, a long time, a lot of headache-
Over two years.
It was a very heavy lift, we got-
Yeah.
-Chris Murphy, our U.S. Senator, involved, uh, we did everything possible to reclaim that money that we were assured, uh, and we eventually got it, we were reimbursed for that approximate $600,000 worth of work that the Borough and the city teamed up on, but again, a very heavy, uh, lift, a lot of screaming, a lot of meetings, a, a lot of advocacy and lobbying, uh, to the highest levels of the federal government, so, um, it was a good team project that we were involved in, uh, but eventually the, the city and the Borough recouped all the, the money that we were promised.
But I, and I, and I agree with everything the Mayor says, but I think it does emphasize the importance of, and perhaps it's coming in and bringing a different line item next year, um, uh, to, to make this clear, but, uh, there, there needs to be a separate, um, sort of agreed-upon understanding with, with, uh, the, Milford, how we can comply with this contract, I mean, the contract is, uh, with the Army Corps of Engineers that actually got this two-and-a-half million dollars, because it, that's, it's a 50-year contract, I think there's still something like 35 years left on it, uh, so it's something-
It was 93, it was signed in 93.
So, it's, it's still there for a long time, it will still provide tremendous benefits to, to Milford going forward.
If the Borough didn't maintain the beach and didn't maintain the records-
We, we would have lost the category G designation, so I guess the point is, it's, it is something that it is worthy of really focusing on and coming up and if, and having a, a set-aside amount, whether it's 10, 20, that, whatever it's, whatever Milford frankly thinks in, in discussing it with, uh, with Public Works, thinks it's going to be needed to maintain this contract in terms of making sure the levels are done, making sure that the beach, uh, the rock is down, it's enough to, so we can go back if there's another huge storm and say, as there will be, and say, "Look, we've done everything that needed to be done." So, again, this, this line item for 75,000 was a way to get this discussion going, we've gotten this discussion going, I know it's taken, um, more of your time than necessary, but that is something that we want to, on everyone's plate.
And as an additional clarification, um, the reimbursement, uh, the contract that was, uh, entered into back in the 1990s between the Army Corps of Woodmont and the city, um, the, the Army Corps, uh, came to the, um, conclusion that the city and the Army Corps and the Borough did comply with all the terms and conditions of that agreement, it was FEMA who questioned, uh, different federal agencies' interpretation of their own agreement, that being, uh, that being so, um, we have, as a city, taken steps, uh, to make sure that, uh, we have followed, uh, that contract, uh, to the T, especially since this has been raised, our engineering department, um, has adjusted its protocols, has adjusted its practices to make sure that, uh, on a regular basis, it surveys, uh, those beaches, the elevation levels, um, so that we follow to a T, uh, every component of that, uh, contract that was entered into in the, in the 1990s.
That's right, every, uh, every six months, the elevations have to be shot, and the Borough had been doing that in the last few years, and now that you have the engineering, you have an engineer on, on staff, um, we have come to that agreement, the problem is going to be, when the next elevation comes that shows that we have less than a 50-foot berm, we're going to, you're, you're, the Mayor actually is going to get the letter from Army Corps of Engineers that'll say X cell or Y cell, there's eight different cells that they, that they shoot the elevations on, they will tell us exact, we'll know, actually, because we're the ones that are, the city is doing the engineering, um, but the Army Corps will send us a formal letter letting us know that these particular cells are in need of, of material, um, and the Borough has been maintaining that, um, but my concern is, if we have a storm that isn't designated a disaster-type of a storm, what would, would be considered a, sometimes just a, a normal course of storms, um, if it takes out too much material, it's going to be way beyond what the little Borough can do with our little one-mil budget that we have, um, um, for, for sand replenishment, we have roughly about $20,000 a year we've been putting into this fund for a couple of years, uh, but it's going to get to the point where, um, there's going to be another storm that's coming, I, I hate to sound like Chicken Little, um, but I said it for many years, and, uh, and then both Irene, uh, was like back-to-back years with storms came and devastated us, it's going to be a reality that we're going to end up having to deal with, and the problem is, we're not going to have a lot of time to quibble about it, because if you do and you don't maintain it based on the, uh, agreement, you lose the designation, and then when you lose the designation, you lose the right to apply for disaster assistance to maintain it the way it was.
I, I think the bottom line is that we, yeah, that, that, uh, we'll have a good sense after the Army Corps sending, sending these letters out as to how much money this is going to cost, and we'll come back next year.
You're answering your questions.
I have some questions still.
Well, you should be patient until they get through with their presentation.
It might affect that, okay, so I'd like to-
That, that ended their presentation, it was answering the question over there, just be patient.
We were actually just answering, answering questions, so I'm, we're happy to answer more.
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Chair, first of all, on the budget, you're, you're stated as a department request, department, what was the number you originally went into with the Mayor?
I believe it was pretty much similar to the, the presentation that we've just made, the 253,000.
But you said-
On this sheet.
On this sheet, so you're talking 253,000?
Yeah.
That was the original, so, my question is, why did it not show it here? Because that would have been your request, let me take it, that would have been your request, the Mayor now negotiates or says, "Hey, look, we can't do that, this is what I recommend, the Board of Finance says, uh, this is what we need, or this is what we can do," and they make a request, now, when Alderman Vicarelli had indicated, why did you not ask for some more in the very beginning, that should have shown up as 253 or whatever that number was, so that when we, and he says it's a two-thirds majority to, to give you any more money back, uh, that would have been a little easier to reach that number if we did decide to put something back as a board, so my concern is, that wasn't upfront as far as what you originally, I know we're dancing here, you know, it's like dancing with the stars, and the issue is that if you had an original request of 253, the Mayor brought it down to 220, and the Board of Finance indicated that they, he said, they supported the Mayor, Mayor's budget at 220, we now have a decision to make, that would be number one. Number two, did I not, did I hear that the assessment that you put on the people, the residents, is one-mil? I don't, I don't know if I picked that up somewhere, what is the assessed, assessed-
It's the budget, the Borough budget, which we use for all of the other items, for the city, uh, the police officers, that sort of a thing, it's, it's-
It runs around a hundred thousand.
Eighteen to 125,000 dollars a year.
Total operating budget would be what you got last year, 220, whatever, plus the hundred, so it's a 300 and whatever thousand-dollar budget, okay, um, that, that's not clear, and, and I don't know, Mr. Mayor, why, could you help us understand this, because we're really dancing around with this, as to what their original proposal or ask was?
Well, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can just interject very briefly, um, I mean, I take some responsibility for it, but the main, the bottom line is that the Borough this particular year did not submit a BR1 form or formal request in paper to the Finance Department, so that led me to put in last year's total, that's the rule, if the department fails to submit their budget in October, in the fall, by the deadline, I have no choice but to put in last year's number.
That makes it clear.
So, that, that explains the department column, with that said, they did come to the Mayor and did present the, the higher number, and we discussed it, you know, after, you know, during our deliberations in December, and they also mentioned it at the Board of Finance level, so, I, I, obviously, this isn't help, I mean, obviously, there, there is responsibility on the part of the Borough, um, and in prior years, they did submit documents on time, but for some reason this year, they did, were not able to submit it on time.
Well, that makes- Actually, in, in fairness, uh, to Peter, I, in, in past years, we may not have submitted it in time, uh, we, we have not been aware of sort of the, the, the intricacies of the departmental rules, because we sort of have been treated as like this, a separate entity, as this municipality, um, we'll be aware, more aware of this in the future, I think historically, we've come in and basically said, um, "This is the number that the Mayor had recommended, we'd like more," this is not an unusual pitch that we're making tonight, and it's not, uh, so it's not like, um, we haven't historically come in and said we need more money than we're getting, but, but you guys make, make a great point in terms of how to approach this, and I think that next year we'll approach this differently.
All right, I think we spent enough time on that, now that we know, now that we know how that happened, anybody else have any more questions for, uh, Borough of Woodmont? Seeing none, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Great presentation. The next department on the hearing schedule will be the Fire Department, page 51, account number 4320.
Thanks. Good evening, thank you, Chief Doggito, I have Assistant Chief Gary Baker, Battalion Chief Dan Wazner, and Chairman of the Fire Commission Kevin McCraft. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come speak, um, I'll be brief, you know, similar to last year, um, just a little, when we went into the, the meeting, again, we were at, uh, we were charged or tasked to just keep, uh, the budget to 3%, we came in at 2.8, I believe, but you'll see, as in previous years, that, um, most of the, the money that is in the increase is in the contractual wages, um, and the, uh, the other contractual items that we have in here, so, the bottom line here, I'm going to say, for the 2015 budget, we, we came in about 113, and this year, we'll, we'll be at 116, so we're only looking at approximately a $300,000 increase from last year's budget, having said that, again, in the contractual and the wages, it's about 260,000, so that, that's only going to leave us with, what, maybe, maybe 50, 60,000 dollars.
And, Mr. Chairman, the only adjustment that we're still determining whether we need to, to make is under capital outlays, line number 49230351 EMS equipment, um, we reduced that from $50,000 to $1,000 on the assumption that we're going to be able to purchase equipment through a, uh, through a grant, um, we are still confirming that that is going to be the case, that we're going to purchase equipment in conjunction with a new rescue truck, a rescue vehicle.
Yes.
And before the end of this budget process, before your board adopts, um, this budget, we'll have more information for you, but that's one of the line items that, uh, there may be a recommendation for a, a technical correction or an adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also, if you'll see in that, it, where we did request 50,000, but further on the page, down a couple of lines, that you will see the, uh, life pack purchases in there for 40,000, and that's what, when we were deliberating that, we were looking for that piece of equipment, and we got it, but we had to put it into that line item, so, um, that's it for now, if, if we can answer any questions.
Uh, pertaining to the overtime for the Oyster Festival, what, that, that $5,000, Chief, is that something that's every year?
It is, and, um, this is our first year putting it into the budget's new line item, um, and I believe, and Peter can probably speak on it, it's, it's an easier or smoother transition to put the money back into the Fire Department from the personnel that work that event, every year, the Oyster Festival Committee pays, uh, Public Safety, Fire, Police, and a PW, and it just makes it easier for accounting to put the money back into our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, on this, I know we had a, an arrangement or an agreement way back when the previous mayor was in charge, uh, that at one time, the Oyster Festival was going to be picking up the expenses for Public Works, Police, and Fire, and, and Building Department, uh, why are we still, why is that still a line item on our city side?
Um, I believe what the relationship is, and I'll let the Finance Director clarify or expand on, on my response, but there was a, a grant that should show up, um, on the books, I think it is mostly distributed through the Police Department budget, uh, because they have that line item, um, and this is a new thing for Fire, so, some of the funding, some of the, the money that, um, does come in through the Oyster Festival grant, uh, can be allocated through Police now that they have that line item, but it is, and it has been shown, uh, on the Police Department budget now for several years.
So, in other words, the taxpayers are actually paying for this, is that what, I want to understand that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, um, technically speaking, yes, initially, the taxpayers are fronting the money, if you will, but we are reimbursed by the Oyster Festival per their agreement with us, and that money goes right back into the line item to reimburse the general fund, and I just, we decided to create this line item because in the past, it was solely in the Police Department, but you are correct that it's not just Police, but there is a portion for Fire, there's a smaller portion for Public Works, obviously the vast majority is Police, um, but we decided that would be accounting-wise prudent to create a line item for Fire because, along with Police, they have a, a component as well.
Thank you for explaining that to me, any more questions for the Fire Department? Wow, Alderman Vicarelli.
Chief, I want to thank you and, uh, uh, for coming in with this lean budget, um, I, I know there's contractual obligations to, um, the membership, and, uh, if I look at this correctly, um, you're probably, uh, $100,000 more than you were last year after contractual obligation, so, I want to commend you for coming in with a lean budget, and, uh, you've done a very good job on this, so I want to thank you.
Thank you.
I want to also express my thanks for the, all the great work you guys do for the city, and I see, uh, also mutual aid jumps in there, too, it's nice to see that, Stratford and West Haven, we all get along, we all help each other out, it's a great, a great country, a great country, America, any more questions for Alderman Giannatassio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Chief, good evening, Chief, I just wanted to ask you about that Quint, if, if it's being used, if we've received delivery on that, um, Quint truck?
Uh, yeah, we just received the, the brand-new Quint, Quint 5, um, I anticipate bringing it to the next meeting, Alderman meeting, um, and we showcased it last night to the, to the Board of Fire Commissioners, it's here, it's, it's just getting some equipment mounted, uh, we have a, a two-day training course from the manufacturer to break in the, the guys that are going to operate it, and then we'll put it in service, so it's, it's quick.
And I'd also like to thank you and your department for all their efforts, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no more questions for the-
Mr. Chairman, um, to follow up on Alderman Giannatassio's point about the Quint, as you remember, uh, about a, a year and a half ago, this board authorized funding for a new engine, uh, and then there was a recommendation by Chief Edo, soon on the heels of him becoming chief, that a, a better piece of equipment instead of an engine would be a Quint, uh, mainly because of some of the things that have happened along our, our coastline, uh, the elevations, the fact that we have hundreds and hundreds of, of homes along the 17 miles of shores that are now being raised 15 feet above the base flood elevation, and there really is the need for, um, not just engines, but, uh, vehicles, pieces of apparatus that have the capability of, uh, pumping water, uh, as well as, uh, an aerial component, uh, a ladder truck as well, um, and so, we amended the initial- And so we amended the initial bond, ordered the Quint in lieu of the pumper. And you really saw the need for that demonstrated two weeks ago on Melba Street. And Chief, if you want to talk about that structure fire and how that, those apparatus, even though this particular new Quint that we just took receipt of was not part of that, we did have several other Quints, as well as our main tower at the site, and it was essential. So I don't know, Chief, if you could talk about how those pieces of apparatus are important.
The Quint 5 that is in service was on the scene. Quint 3 from Devon was on the scene. We had our tower truck that was on the scene also. And we called the second alarm to bring everybody from Milford in, and then we called for an additional ladder truck, and we specified a Quint that came from West Haven. And because that house was elevated and with the winds, as you know, it was quite the fire. But those elevated streams, those master streams, really helped us knock that fire down. And it proved that that house was, as you said, was at least 15 feet off the ground. And it was two and a half stories from that. And then Quint 5, original initial attack was the exposures, what we would say to fire the, to the left and the right of the fire building. They initially attacked with handlines while the other Quints that arrived set up their master streams at the elevated level and started knocking down the main body of the fire. We knew that we were pretty much losing that structure, but we wanted to contain the fire to them within that structure. And it proved, Chief Baker was actually chief operations of that event. He did a great job. The strategy and tactics worked out well. One thing, the wind, it accelerated the fire. Normally, you don't see a fire like that in the daytime. It really accelerated, but we believe from the underside of the house. But the wind was blowing offshore, so it was blowing out. Had it blown parallel to the street, we could have lost quite a few homes. And that could happen in any storm, too. This just happened to be a windy day. But you get the hurricanes we were talking about, nor'easters I worry about because you get the winds like that. I don't want to make anybody afraid, but I think East Broadway is another area where we can have that kind of a fire. The Marshes, where we used to have the Marshes, those fires. Luckily, now the state comes in and knocks down the Fragmites, so we don't get those fires anymore, but that could happen. Broadway, the homes are very big and they're close. It's Beach Community, old Beach Community. But the Quint operation really helped us that day.
Thank you, Chief, for explaining that to us. Does anybody else have any questions for the chief on Fire Department? Alderman Shaw.
Thank you. Just to follow up on the Melba fire, was there an issue with the water pressure, or is that an issue? Because that came up during that fire.
Water came up in that instance. And it's not so much when we talk pressure, people say pressure. It's really volume. It's the amount of water. The pressure doesn't really matter. It has great pressure there. That water comes from Shingle Hill in West Haven. But typically, in a neighborhood, you'll have water from different directions. And this particular area, it just comes down from Shingle Hill, down Melba Street, past the Beachcomber, and kind of stops at the bridge, the little bridge there. And when the fire trucks arrive and when they, we lay from the fire hydrants to get our water supply, there's three fire hydrants in that section, and three of the trucks were on them. And they just steal water from each other. And typically, the first fire truck on the hydrant will get the bulk of the water. Once we realized that, and water company did respond, we went to another hydrant on the other side of the bridge and fed back to some of the trucks on scene. And then the West Shore fire truck came. They laid from a fire hydrant further up, I think on Mills, the corner of Mills. And then we tied in, they tied into our trucks, and then the water was fine.
Alderman Stamford.
Yes. I'd just like to thank you for all you do. The fire on Melba Street demonstrates to us how you put your lives in jeopardy to keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions for the chief on that particular account? Seeing none, account number 4360, lights, hydrants, and water, page 62.
I said last year, that's to pay the bills. And that is, we handle that in the budget book, but it's pretty much just paying the street lining and the water usage. And you see, the rental water company owns the hydrants. We put in for a hydrant this year. I don't believe we did last year. And we got it. It's approximately $6,000. The last hydrant we got was about $5,600, so we just rounded it up to $6,000. And typically, every year, we'll try to find an area where we're lacking a fire hydrant, and we'll get one installed.
Any questions regarding account 4360? Seeing none, the next account, 4331, civil preparedness, page 58.
Civil preparedness, I believe we left that one pretty static. I don't know if Dan, is there something in particular that we did on that? I don't believe that we changed anything from last year in that account.
We had initially requested a little more electricity for the admin of Seamen's Land.
Yeah.
Any questions regarding civil preparedness? Seeing none, we'll go on to the last account, account number 4805, CEMED, page 88.
And again, there, too, I believe that that stayed static. CEMED, that's the Communications for Medical Emergency Dispatch. That's the central dispatch for when the medic units are going to area hospitals, and they put what's a patch. So our paramedics can talk to the ER doctors at Yale or St. V's, Bridgeport, wherever they go.
Any questions regarding CEMED? Seeing none. Thank you, Chief. You and your staff have the wonderful job you do for the city. Great job. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Is there a motion to recess?
So moved.
Next meeting will be tomorrow night, Thursday, April 23rd, 7:00.